Tonight's council meeting of Tuesday, July the 11th. The way we start off our council meetings is with the singing of Oh Canada. So tonight, we've got special, a special guest here to sing. Two women, young women. Milana and Ivana Masia Sisters. So ladies, if maybe you want to come around. Oh yeah, right up to the microphone. And before, I'm going to read a little bit about you. Don't stare yet. You've got to make sure the little red light is on the little buttons. Can you see over there, Counsel Campbell? If they're on?
Yes.
Okay, great. So let me read a little about you ladies before you start, okay? Today, we have the Masia Sisters. Both girls attend St. Vincent de Paul Catholic Elementary School, where Milana will enter grade seven and Ivana will be in grade four in September. The Masia Sisters, who have been performing together for four years, enjoy singing lessons, piano lessons, violin, and competitive dance. Ivana was the recent recipient of a Kiwanis Scholarship for violin. Milana is currently part of an all-new Toronto Girl Band called Girl Power. The band's goal is to empower youth through music and dance. The Masia Sisters are delighted to sing our national anthem tonight. So ladies, whenever you're ready.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in our last stands command. With glory hearts, we see thee rise, the true North, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand ungodified for thee. God keeper land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand ungodified for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand ungodified for thee.
Well, ladies, on behalf of City Council and all the residents, we want to say thank you. That was one of the nicest, harmonizing Oh Canadians that I've heard here before. So congratulations and thank you very much and have a great summer, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you want to be seated. The next order of business, I'm going to ask our Commissioner, Dave Smith, to come to the microphone. And from time to time, Dave writes poetry and he enlightens situations with the way he writes. So when he's here protecting the public and doing what he does for us in the city, in his spare time, this is what he's working on. So without further ado, we offer our Commissioner, Dave Smith, the opportunity to read his latest bit of poetry.
Canada Day. It's 150 years of Canada. 150 years as Canada is set through Upper and Lower Canada, and infrastructure that we get. The mighty thunder, the pounding roar of the Niagara River on the rocks and shore. The Niagara escarpment is quite the shelf. It's given Canada a lot of wealth. The beauty, the splendor, the eternal roar has attracted citizens to our fine shore. 150 years from sea to sea, it captured hearts and liberty. The railroad tied its mighty knot. The Rocky Mountains, what we got. The breadbasket of the Prairies, too, kept nations fed during World War II. From the Union Jack to our Canadian flag, rich in history, our Constitution with pride. It's our freedom from sea to sea, a massive country that includes both you and me. Look at Canada, a place to call home. What a nation to live and roam. 150 years as we continue to thrive. Our strength is people. Our nation comes alive.
All right. Well done, well done. Dave, you know, and I appreciate, and also Stephen here, for bringing your talent to us at the city and letting us know some of the great things that you've written. And he's written great stories and great poems on a number of different topics. And it's great from time to time that he offers his time to share with us. It's a real talent that you've got. And thanks for sharing that with all the residents of Niagara Falls. Well done. Thank you very much, Dave. He's a Commissioner with the City. That was good. Counsel Carroll said he'd be okay getting a parking ticket now. That's great. All right, first order of business is the adoption of the minutes from our June 13th and June 22nd meetings. Counsel Morocco, seconded by Counsel Strange. You have an item for council? Yep, Counsel Crater?
Thank you, Worship. I had contacted the clerk to make him aware and suggested that it need to be done in open council. Just one small error in the minutes. And it's on the very first page, disclosure of.
Which minutes, Counsel?
I'm sorry, the June the 13th.
13th, yep.
And it's under disclosure of pecuniary interests. It says Counsel Crater indicated pecuniary interest with check number 4050 made payable to himself. That wasn't correct. It's payable to the Niagara District Catholic School Board. And the reason was it wasn't payable to a member of my family is because of my own family works for the Niagara District School Board. So just wanted to have that correct.
Okay, you've got that, Mr. Clerk? Okay. Thank you for that. If there's no further changes, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, okay? And that's approved. Thank you. Now we move on to deputations. Pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Disclosures of a pecuniary interest, please. Counsel Anoni in Morocco.
Check 405707 made out to myself.
Thank you. Counsel Morocco?
Yes, check number 405509 made to my spouse.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Peter Angelo in Carroll?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. Niagara Catholic District School Board is my employer. They get sent, I guess, their levy, which is 000880007. And also OPA 118, PBD 201726. My family recently purchased land in the area.
Okay, noted. Counsel Carroll?
Thank you, Worship. A little bit of an odd one, but under the communications and comments of the city clerk, the Victoria Centre, all the BIAs are asking for funding. But I'm a member of the Victoria Centre BI and the Falls View BI. I'm going to declare a conflict. As I've just recently been made aware after talking to Mr. Todd, that if someone doesn't, if one person or some people in the BIAs don't pay their taxes or are dragging their taxes, the city puts the money in to cover their share of the funding that goes into the BI. So in that case, it would be city money that could go into our BI. So I'm going to declare a conflict of interest.
Okay. Thank you for that, Counsel. Counsel Crater?
Yes. Under municipal accounts, check number 405442. That check is payable to myself. And under municipal account, check 0088 and 0007. That's payable to Niagara District Catholic School Board. I remember our family works for the school board. And finally, under the consent agenda, report CD 2017-03. I have a conflict of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. If there's no other disclosures, then I've got check number 404866. Check made out to myself. So moving along, we're going to start off with deputations and presentations. In my first presentation, I'd like to bring up Ethan Zahn. Ethan, come on up here. Just come around there. There's an opening in the gate. Zahn, I get that, sir. Zahn, get that right. Yeah, right through there. Come on up here, Ethan. How are you? Nice to meet you. Very good. Come on over here. So you see it, Zahn? Is that right?
Yes.
Zahn, okay. So let me read a little bit about Ethan, Ethan Zahn. And you know, maybe I should have Linda up here, too. Yeah, why don't you come on up here, Linda? Come on up here and join me. This is a neat story and somebody might have seen it in today's paper. And when the papers saw that we were recognizing Ethan today, they decided to write a story about him over the weekend. So it was in today's Niagara Falls Review paper. So let me read a little bit about Ethan. This is an act of bravery and a good young man. Come over here a little closer, Ethan. I won't wait. Today, we're going to recognize him. He's 12 years old. You're a big boy. And he did the right thing and he showed bravery beyond his years. Ethan was walking home from school. He goes to St. Vincent de Paul. So the same as you girls there, St. Vincent de Paul. And he was walking home to some other students and he spotted a woman. This would be Linda Vallad. She was sitting on her front steps and the steps were covered in blood. So you know, a lot of kids, typical kids, would have just looked and looked back at their cellphone and maybe kept walking and not really paid a lot of attention. But we've got a special boy here. So he convinces his mother, his mother's here. Hello, wait. Convince his mother to go back with him to Linda's home where they check up on her because she had said she was okay. So earlier in the day, Vallad had fallen at work and suffered a head injury. At work, she continued to feel unwell and she came home. Once she was home, she blacked out and fell backward down the concrete stairs. After nearly a month in the hospital, Linda was eventually released and searched out Ethan's family in order to thank him. Because Ethan, that wasn't good enough. He went back and they checked on her. And if they hadn't found her, you know, it could have ended in a real sad way. But because of what he did, it ended, it's got a happy ending. And the nice thing is it's a great example for other kids. It's an example for other people that you take ownership of your situation. You're not, there's no such thing as innocent bystanders. We're all bystanders and we all have to be engaged and we all have to do our part. And Ethan, what a great example for a 12-year-old boy. So Ethan, it's not only Linda who's grateful, but it's your family who's proud of you and it's your whole community. And I'm here with all the City Council, all the residents at home that are watching on TV. Probably both three or four of them. No, actually, the funny thing is surprisingly, I don't know why, but a lot of people watch this show. Like it's one of the highest rated shows. So we want to thank you for your act of bravery and for doing the right thing and going with your instinct, right? They say your gut. His gut was telling him something and he listened to his gut. He didn't ignore it. And on behalf of the City Council, all of us members, we want to thank you and on behalf of all the residents for doing the right thing. So what I'd like to do, present you with two things, Ethan. First, this is a certificate. That's not totally flattened out here. But a certificate that I've signed on behalf of the city just to remind you how proud we are of you and your act of bravery. I'd like to give that to you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And this is a City Niagara Falls backpack. Very cool backpack. And it's got like a water bottle with the crest. Yeah, it's got the city crest. I don't know if there's anything else in the bags on the ship that the girls put in there. What's that, first aid kit? And the Rubik's Cube kind of thing. That's a City Niagara Falls thing. And I think you have a little bit of, I'm not sure if there's anything. To be honest, I'm not sure what the girls put in there. Oh my God, he's got a bobblehead in there. Look at that. Oh, wow. You poor kid. I'm so sorry. Yeah, you know what? We're going to line you up with a couple more things. Counsel Morocco, you're absolutely right. We're going to line you up also with some attraction passes for some of the neat attractions in the city. So maybe before you leave, we'll get your phone number. What's that? Yeah, sure. I think that's a great idea. Anything else? Want to throw in a card? Giving everything away. Yes, please.
I don't use this with standing ovation, but I think this is.
Let's give him a standing ovation. So why don't we do a picture first? Linda, come on in. We're going to picture first. And now, why don't we ask Ethan, would you like to say maybe a couple of words to the people here? Anything you want to?
Just thank you for everything and putting me in the newspaper and thank you for the bag and for the certificate. And thank you for helping me out with the situation. I hope you feel better soon.
He's a good boy.
I think Bill's.
I've got, I've got.
He's got it.
You got it? Okay, good, good. Thank you. Okay, that's great. Thanks a lot.
Thank you so much. Appreciate everything.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure. Thank you for asking. Good boy.
Thank you.
Be proud of him.
Very proud.
He's adorable. He's adorable. We all hope our boys grow up to be like Ethan. Now, I feel bad, Mr. Ludzik. I don't know how you're going to top that one. But we've got Steve Ludzik, hockey legend and fundraising legend in the house. So he's going to address us about his annual celebrity roast scheduled for August the 19th at the Scotiabank Convention Centre. So Steve, come on up to the microphone.
Mayor, hey. Wayne, how are you? It's our old strength and conditioning coach in Niagara Falls, 1978. I'm still sore. Thanks for having me here, guys. I just, 18 years ago, I got diagnosed with Parkinson's disease. And I kept quiet about it until six years ago. And I decided that I was going to do something about it. And I've been very fortunate that we've run a therapeutic course for people with Parkinson's disease. We've had great success. We are number one in Canada, made number one in Canada. I can say that safely because nobody else does what we do in Canada. We look after Parkinson's patients and help them get back on their feet. And we've had great success. I wanted, we have a golf tournament. It's sold out, so it's two days. But the roast, all of our funding is done through a roast. That's where we make all the money. It doesn't cost the patients a cent to come to my Parkinson's clinic. Not a penny. But we raise all the money through table sales. And we're roasting Dino Ciccarelli this year, a 600-goal scorer and a hockey athlete. And I tell you what, I think it's the gal of the year. I really do believe it is. And we have a lot of fun. And Hotel De Shaver is really excited about this, too. I'd like to know if you guys can, we've got a few tables left. If you guys would like to buy a table, it'd be great.
Yes. I think he's looking for a soca. I got Counsel Strange and then I got Counsel Thompson.
Yeah, I'll put in a motion. I'd just like to make a few remarks.
Oh, a few remarks? Sure, yeah, of course.
No, I just want to thank Ludzik for coming down. He was an idol of mine growing up. And my dad used to watch you and alarm and nurse the boys. You're a false liar.
They're all coming back for the roast.
They're all coming, which is awesome, right? And then the stuff he went on as, you know, faculty in the IHL in Chicago and coaching camp in Bay. But I think it's the stuff that's, that you've done off the rank that's going to make you more famous than ever. And the stuff that you're doing for therapeutic clinic and stuff, it's helping so many people. So we want to thank you so much for bringing this to the forefront and helping all these people with Parkinson's and the early stages of Parkinson's. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Wayne, you want to make the motion? Wayne, Counsel Thompson, you want to make the motion then?
For sure. And we go back along the way.
Burke Templeton.
Burke Templeton. And when I was sitting in the office up there, we used to go there at noon hour and run around the top of the arena and try to keep him in shape. But unfortunately, he's gone.
Yeah. Yeah, very hard.
Anyway, you're doing a great job and we support you 100%.
Thank you.
So did you want to make a motion for the tables?
Yes.
So we're going to get, okay, so are you getting two or a pair? Or what are you getting? Two tables?
I think we usually buy the two tables.
Yeah, that'd be great. I'd love that.
Okay, so we got a motion by, what's that?
Can we include the table for the, we didn't have at our last meeting, we didn't have new business. And we were supposed to make a motion to buy a table at the last boxing match because they bought that table for the KO for cancer. And I would include that in the motion, too. But that's all passed and we're going to ignore that.
Okay, so we got a motion. Yep, I got Counsel Campbell. So I got moved by Wayne Thompson, seconded by Counsel Campbell. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor? That's unanimously approved. So we're going to look forward to the roast.
It'll be awesome. It's going to be awesome. Thanks for coming. I appreciate the backup.
It's always a great event.
Thank you.
Appreciate you doing this for us, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I've got two or other deputations. We got a request to speak from Charlotte King, the President of the Niagara Arts Showcase. It's listed as Communications Number Three. So if we could bring Charlotte up now to address council, we can not have you have to wait around.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Diodati and council members. My name is Charlotte King. I'm the President of Niagara Arts Showcase and this is our administrator, Lori LaCoco. Niagara Arts Showcase is a not-for-profit organization that supports artists and musicians in Niagara Falls, along with providing residents and visitors the opportunity to enjoy the arts and culture. We're here to tell you about our signature event that's coming up. It's the Carmel Fine Art Music Festival. It's being held September 15th to 17th this year. And we're happy to have a new home at Fireman's Park. It's an indoor-outdoor show and it will be held rain or shine. We begin the evening with an artist's soiree on September 15th from 7:00 PM until 10:00 PM. Oh, I'm sorry, 11:00 PM. And it provides the public with the first viewing of the festival's juried fine art and the local high school's up-and-coming art show. Guests will have the ability to mingle with the artists while enjoying wine, hors d'oeuvres, and the musical entertainment, along with the presentations of awards. The tickets for the soiree are $15. And then on Saturday, the festival rolls out from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM and on Sunday, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And we'll be having things like art in a variety of mediums and styles, dozens of musicians playing throughout the weekend, the children's creative art zone, art installations that transform the perception of space, live art artists that will be creating a series of work live at the event, community art mural installations, and everyone is welcome to add to it. And the admission for this is $5 and children under 12 are free. There'll be a lot more as time goes on. And we would like to thank the Stamford Centre Volunteer Firemen's Association. They've been really wonderful to work with and we're excited to form a partnership with them. We'd also like to thank the City of Niagara Falls for awarding us Niagara Falls Cultural Development Grant. And these funds will help us present an excellent event, bring money back into the community, give local artists and some really great exposure and provide residents, as well as visitors, an opportunity to enjoy the arts and the culture in Niagara Falls. We're asking for the City of Niagara Falls to waive any fees associated with the event. And finally, we would like to volunteer, we would like to ask for volunteers or help in any way. And if they would like to, please visit our website at carmelfineart.ca. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. So we've got a request that we waive the fees associated with the event for September 15th, 16th, and 17th. Okay, we've got a motion by Counsel Strange and seconded by Counsel Campbell. So any discussion to that? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved unanimously.
Great.
So thank you very much. Good luck with your event. Look forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and I've got one other deputation presentation. Counsel Valpatty has requested a brief update from the region on what's been going on. There's been a lot of things going on. We've been meeting, we had meetings today, too, as a matter of fact, and tomorrow. So Counsel Valpatty, if you'd like to, wherever you prefer, you can do it from there if you like, or there? No, oh yeah, up at the mic, I'm told, yeah.
Oh, up the mic.
Yeah, because our live streaming.
Oh, right. Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Thank you for this opportunity. For council and residents, just a few notes on what we're up to with the region, the constructive things that we're up to at the region. First of all, the Niagara Prosperity Initiative. Every year, the region donates, basically gives $1.5 million to not-for-profit agencies throughout the region. It's done with a review committee, of which I'm a member. And this year, 21 projects from 15 agencies across Niagara were approved. The Niagara Prosperity Initiative focuses on neighborhood-based interventions and development to increase prosperity. We use a mapping tool. It's that only those neighborhoods that are really in need of investment are up for consideration. The types of projects we consider are shelter assistance, educational programs for children and youth, life skills programs for adults, and job-specific skills. The committee is about 12 people, I think. And we try to, there are three Niagara Regional Counselors and then representatives from across the region. And this year, it was administered by the United Way of Niagara Falls and Fort Erie. We do an RFP every year for that. We're anticipating that 5,556 people will be served, 589 new networks and partnerships will be formed, and a total of 320 jobs will be created. Now, the organizations located or operating in Niagara Falls in particular received $317,300, representing 22% of all 2017 NPI money. And the organizations include Gateway Residential and Community Support Services of Niagara, that was $33,000. Hannah House Maternity Home, $11,400. Heartland Forest, Nature Experience, $44,000. The John Howard Society of Niagara, $15,500. The Niagara Regional Native Centre, $52,300. And Project Share, $161,600. So that's, it's a real benefit to a lot of people right across Niagara who are experiencing poverty, particularly children and the mentally ill that are close to our hearts. I'm really pleased to be part of this initiative. It's a key component to assisting very vulnerable people. The next one is intermunicipal transit. And I don't know, this probably isn't on your agenda tonight, but I know that you've been talking about it. Regional Council approved a report concerning the next steps for our important work on intermunicipal transit. We approved the formal creation of a staff working group that will consist of staff representation from all 12 municipalities in the Niagara region to conduct the technical work and ensure all municipalities have a seat at the table. We approved the creation of a steering committee that will consist of elected officials from Niagara Falls, St. Catharines, Welland, and throughout the region. So we have the mayors of the Welland Niagara Falls and St. Catharines already on the group. And we appointed Chair Kazlam, Pelham Counselor Brian Beatty, Fort Erie Mayor Wayne Redicop, and Grimsby Counselor Tony Quirk to also sit on this steering committee. I'd also like to highlight the focus Regional Council has placed on intermunicipal transit during this term. This is an initiative that we are all behind at the region. And I'd like to thank Mayor Diodati and Chair Kaz and other mayors for all their work. And today, we addressed for the first time our master transportation plan, which didn't include this intermunicipal transit. But it's a huge plan that I won't even tell you how much it's going to cost because it's, but that's over 25 years, so that's a long time. It's a visionary plan and it's really important. Last of all, the budget for 2018. We approved budget guidance because we like to have our budget done before the end of the year. So we'll be having meeting, a lot of meetings from now until December. Budget was, guidance was approved at 1.5% with an additional 1.5% earmarked for the upcoming 2021 Canada Games. Because that's an important part of what we do. So we have to put aside enough money in the next four or five years to cover that. And we're also working on DCs and I see that's on your agenda tonight. That's been a long haul with that, but we've been flexible with it. We've listened to everybody.
Development charges.
Development charge. I'm sorry, development charges, right. And I'm a chair of that committee. And you know, we have a lot of different interests there, but really growth has to pay for growth. And we are at the bottom as compared to other regions in Ontario. I mean, with our, the amount of our development charges. So they're going to be higher. But these are charges that people who buy new houses have to pay in order to live in one of our great communities. So that's what that is. We're working on our Code of Conduct, which has been referred to our new Integrity Commissioner who has now been hired for the next four years. to ADR, which is the name of our new group, and they will come up with a code of conduct which we will try to approve in the next few months. And really, one of our big problems is that we don't want to end up with thirteen different codes of conduct across the region, because twelve municipalities and a regional code of conduct, think of how the mayor is going to act in that kind of a system, like what is approved here may not be approved at the region. So we're hoping that we can get input from all of the municipalities so we can end up with a code of conduct that is somewhat the same across the whole region. And I think that's about it. There's a lot of other things, but those were the highlights I wanted to bring to your attention.
Do we have any questions or comments for councillor Volpatty? None? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's not often that we get updates in person. Appreciate you taking the time to give us a verbal.
Well, thank you for allowing me to be here.
Yeah, thanks very much, councillor. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move along in the agenda to item CAO 201704, the Code of Conduct for Members of Council and Integrity Commissioner Appointment Process. So our CAO is going to speak to this next agenda item.
Mr. Mayor, just a, thank you. Have a brief presentation tonight on the item. The report and draft code of conduct were circulated to all members of council in the agenda package last week, and I just want to give you a few highlights, maybe starting off with a little bit of the chronology of where we've come through provincial legislation, and it really dates back to two thousand and six. Bill, if you would mind advancing slide, please. And Bill 130 at that time gave municipalities the authority to appoint an integrity commissioner. Our council, based on the strategic priorities of two thousand and eleven, fourteen, identified the need to develop a corporate code of ethics in keeping with our recently approved strategic priorities after the election in two thousand and eleven. And that led to an HR report where we did establish and approve a code of ethics and conflict of interest policy. That document applied to employees as well as elected officials. There was further legislation changes in two thousand and fourteen, and in January of sixteen, the Ontario Ombudsman was given additional powers by the province, really dealing with closed-meeting investigations, and that's really what their, that act did in terms of expanding their authority. In November of sixteen, there was a department by the clerk where council directed us to implement a code of conduct for members of council, and that's the report that you have before you tonight. So subsequent to that, just this past June, past May, Bill 68 was approved, and that had a requirement that all municipalities must, and it's not permissive, it's a shall and must, approve a code of conduct. As I indicated previously, part of that process is to have an integrity commissioner. And if you recall my conversation before council a couple of months ago, we had hoped we could default that to the ombudsman, and quite clearly, the ombudsman has indicated that they have no interest in looking at investigations that are under this bill and that are investigations that involve an integrity commissioner, and indicated we should go out and engage that integrity commissioner. So part of the report tonight also includes a process where we would go through a, an appointment process for that integrity commissioner. So that's the first part of the chronology. So your code of conduct that hopefully you've all had a chance to review in your package deals with a broad range of issues. It's dealing with different conflict of interest, behavior at meetings, social media policy, and that is what the, will base any findings or breaches that a, an integrity commissioner would find during any investigation on any breaches under our code of conduct. So what we're asking council to do tonight with respect to the code is to adopt the code, and there's two options that you have, and different municipalities across the province have taken a different approach to this. So council can choose one of two options. One is that you can impose, you can personally or collectively, as a council, impose penalties under section two-two-three of the municipal act. Or, as some municipalities have done, they've delegated that authority to the integrity commissioner, and the integrity commissioner would be the one that would do the investigation and actually recommend the penalties that he or she believes should be imposed. So again, that's a choice. Council can either choose option one or option two, and again, it varies across the province as to which municipality chooses which option, but they're both available to council, and that would be one thing that council coming out of tonight should choose. Now, in terms of the integrity commissioner himself, they report directly to council, so any complaint filed under this policy, there'd be a report, and that report would come directly to council. And again, depending on which option you choose, would be council imposing any recommended penalties, or the integrity commissioner would automatically be imposing those penalties. So their role is to perform an independent investigation, looking at any breaches of the code of conduct that may occur with respect to the rules and policies. This does not govern employees. This is a code for council. Employees are governed under different pieces of legislation include, this council is very familiar with Bill 168 and other corporate policies that we have that govern our employees. So the reason why we're bringing this forward at this time is that the recently passed bill and legislation received royal assent just this past May, and that's why it's timely for it to be in front of council tonight. So the recommendation with respect to the integrity commissioner is that we need to carry out an RFP process, and subsequent to that RFP process, we present a report back to council. In the meantime, as directed by the Ombudsman's Office, if there's any complaint that comes forward in the interim, until we have formally appointed a integrity commissioner under the RFP process, that our city solicitor would seek out independent individuals to conduct such investigations until that formal appointment has been made. So, Mr. Mayor, tonight, we're really suggesting that we endorse the document, that we proceed with the RFP process, and that council really should choose either option one or option two under the second item in the recommendation in the report.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. CAO. I've got councillor Morocco.
Yes, your worship, I'd like to move the recommendation forward. I'm not sure what the wishes of the council colleagues are to adopt option one or two, but I think option two would probably be the best. The integrity commissioner actually provides us with the recommendation, and at the end of the day, council still has the last say on whether we accept the recommendation of the advice that has been imposed as to the penalties. I'm not sure what the.
So you're, so you're.
Is it not both the same? We're both having the same.
Well, no, the one is the integrity commissioner actually imposes a penalty, and the other one is they would make suggestions, and we would impose a penalty. So there's, that's the two options for recommendation two. So I don't know either what the feeling.
Well, okay, I'm invited to.
If I could just clarify that.
I also just want to point out that I'm glad that we're also adopting something that also addresses social media.
Yeah.
I think it's about time that we do, because everybody should be accountable for the actions that take place on social media and those that are posted on social media, because it's another form of bullying, and I just don't think it's proper, so I definitely, I'm pleased to see that. Anyway, I'm willing to pass it, and I'm happy to say that either we take option one or two, which is of council.
Okay. All right. So she's kind of leaving it out there for some discussion. I know what the will of council is. If you want the integrity commissioner to be the one to come up with and direct the penalty, or if you like it to be given to us as options, and then we do it. So it's up to you. Councillor Thompson.
Yeah, I like the social media aspect, talking about that for a long time. Fifteen-two, how does somebody, if they see something or if there's something there that is offensive, untrue, disrespectful, how is that handled through the municipality?
Mr. CAO?
Well, Mr. Mayor, through you.
It has to be referred to the integrity.
Yeah, so an individual that saw something offensive on, on a Facebook post or in social media, the way this policy is, is written is that it's up to the member, for example, to police their own social media sites. If there was offensive material, an individual could lodge a complaint. That complaint would then go to the integrity commissioner, and the integrity commissioner would issue his ruling on whether he found the information offensive, whether it was an attempt by the member to take that material down or not, or leave it, and from there would impose any penalty that he or she thought was appropriate.
And what about when somebody posts something on a council member's social media, and they leave it up there? What happens in a case like that?
Well, if I could just draw your attention to fifteen-two, the way this policy is worded, it says, "use of social media to publish anything or to allow anything to be published on their social media sites that is dishonest, untrue, offensive, disrespectful constitutes harassment, is defamatory, or misleading in any way." So it's the member's responsibility, if they have a social media site, to ensure that none of their posts or any posts that are on their site are untrue, disrespectful, offensive. So it's their responsibility.
So it all comes down to the integrity commissioner to deal with these issues?
Yes.
If there's a formal complaint.
Yeah, if there's a formal complaint process in the document, so if somebody launched a formal complaint, that goes to the integrity commissioner. They review the material, they make a finding.
Is it retroactive or is it just starting today? Anyway.
Today, yeah.
We're having an election next year. I'm wondering if, because this is so important, and it is utilized, bullying was the word, but it's sometimes above and beyond that, and I'm wondering if anybody, in fact, the election process starts in, I think, next year in, what, August?
No, actually, you can, you can register in.
May first.
May first. It used to be January, it's now May.
So I wondered if there could be something, somebody who signs up to run for office, if they could be included in the social media aspect of this particular legislation, once they formally sign a document.
I think in, this refers to members of council, so this would be elected officials. So I, we'd have to check as to how you might monitor that sort of election campaign period, but this policy would be to council members only.
Well, maybe you could look into that.
We can follow up on that. I see the solicitor's making notes, so, yeah.
We could follow up on it.
Yeah, and I prefer option one. I think this is council's responsibility, and I would support that.
Okay. Councillor Crean.
Thank you, worship. First of all, just a question to the CAO. Congratulations, this package that we put together, who put it together?
So what we've done is I had my staff, Ms. Morton and the city solicitor, they've reviewed numerous, I can't even say how many, codes of conduct of other municipalities across the province. This is, we viewed as sort of a best practice of what we thought the best of the best were. That's the document in front of it. It's been reviewed by legal, so that's how we've come up with it.
Great. So I have some positive comments that I wanted to make. You know, on a number of occasions I've stood up and said, during my term of office as an MPP, one of my best resources as a member of parliament was the integrity commissioner, because I would often go to the integrity commissioner and ask the question, "Am I allowed to do this?" A constituent has asked me to issue some type of a letter or something, and I'm not sure, and or other things. So I'd always go to integrity commissioner, and I always got a ruling. So I think that was a real benefit, and I think for the council members to have an integrity commissioner that you'll be able to go to, to get some advice, and I'm sure that's going to be the same process. That's good, because right now, the way it is for any of us, we have to go to a lawyer. You're not going to go to Mr. Beam and not be disrespectful, but you're not going to go to Mr. Beam, and you're going to go to some, a lawyer, and the lawyer may or may not have an understanding of municipal legislation, and he'll probably say something like, "I'll give you my best advice," but it doesn't mean it's accurate. So I think this is really a positive thing. But the other thing is that for us as members of parliament, there was one integrity commissioner, and there was one code, like we all followed it. And I think councillor, regional councillor Volpatty, and we were talking for a little bit earlier, and I think this is really important, because we have twelve municipalities. We could end up with twelve different codes. Now, you look at yourself, your worship, you're under a code, and if we pass it tonight, that's the Niagara Falls code. Now, you're also going to be under a code of conduct for the region, which will be a different code of conduct. So you could have a situation where under our code, you have committed a violation, but under the regional code, which is going to be different, it's not verbatim as ours, you may not be. So really, the point I'm trying to make is this is our, really a golden opportunity, and I know you sit on the committee for the region, and you're working on their code of conduct, so you certainly have a wealth of knowledge from that experience. But I think it's an opportunity for us to have a standard code if we work collectively together in the region, because no matter whether you're a councillor for Welland or Colburn or Niagara Falls, wherever, you should be conducting yourself exactly in the same manner, under the same code of conduct. Shouldn't have twelve different ones out there. So I'm, I'm thinking what we should be doing, and I know your motion is made with really a positive, positive reason, but I think we're kind of going a little too quick, and there are with the region, and they've already hired an integrity commissioner, if I'm correct, they've hired one, and they're going to use that integrity commissioner to give them some advice on developing their code of conduct. So you get, rather than just us trying to do it internally. I think maybe what we should take a look at, as opposed to just passing our own, and I'm certainly not being critical of you, Mr. Todd, or the staff, you worked hard on this, I think we should be trying to work together with the region and other municipalities to try to have one standard throughout, throughout the region. The other thing that crosses my mind is, well, if we go down this road, we hire one, and Fort Erie may hire one, Welland may hire one, and wouldn't it kind of make sense to have one integrity commissioner, one agency, they may have two or three that would work collectively together, that know the deal with one set of codes, the same no matter where you go, and so that we have a standard across the whole region? So I'm, I'm suggesting that maybe, and I'm saying this in a positive basis, not, not being critical at all, and this is, this is wonderful. The other thing that, that there's a benefit to, not just internally, but for the public, because now the public will have an opportunity, if they feel that Kim Crater has done something that's inappropriate by not declaring a conflict of interest, they will be able to go to the integrity commissioner and file their complaint. That's, now opens the door to that as well. We should understand that. And so we should ensure that we have that standard throughout the region, no matter where you live, you're going to have one agency to deal with. So I'm, I'm suggesting that maybe we're going just a little too quick, and maybe we should look at not dealing with it tonight, having some conversations with the region, we've got a regional councillor here as well, yourself, and seeing if we can develop among ourselves in this entire region, one standard that we can all follow for a code of conduct, and for the public to have access, if you want to file complaints, it's one standard that they, they deal with. So I think, and again, I understand your motion, but I think maybe we should just put a hold on this and try to follow through and have some contacts with some of the others and yourself, with the region and some of the other municipalities, see if we want to collectively have one standard code of conduct. And the only way I can suggest that is if we want to consider deferring this, you know, with direction to yourself as the mayor and our CEO, and to look at having conversations with the other agency. Again, I'm not trying to cut off debate, and nobody has to second it, second it if they don't, don't want to, but suggesting that would be a more, because this is, and I'll close with saying this, like this is a very significant document, and I know the staff have put a lot of time into it, but this is significant, not just for us here, that we're new, we're elected, but for future councillors, for people who are running, and councillor Thompson made the point as well, it's a good point, when you have new people who are running, they should know what the standard code of conduct is, how they have to conduct themselves, it should be a standard. And councillor Thompson made the point as well, it's a good point, when you have new people who are running, they should know what the standard code of conduct is, how they have to conduct themselves, it should be a standard for that as well. So maybe I'll allow more debate, but I'm looking at maybe making a motion to defer, but on a positive basis, that we work with the region and some of the municipalities if we can have one standard code throughout the region.
Thank you, councillor. I've got Mr. Beeman, like, to weigh in.
The difficulty we face, they've been trying to get, as the clerks have been explaining, the former clerk was explaining for quite some time, they've been trying to get a common code of conduct for quite a while. We are, we currently have a statute that makes us have to have one. So my, I'm suggesting that councillor Peters, I don't want to discourage his initiative at all, because it's a great idea, having one code for everybody, but it would be a wise idea, I suggest, for council to have one in place while we're negotiating the other one. Because any day now, the, the legislation could be proclaimed in force, in which case we have to have one. So that the, the, I think council might propose to have its cake and eat it, to put this one in place, knowing that, as they go forward, they will be, we will be coming back to you with what results from the negotiations which are going on between the, the other, that is, we would be instructed to participate in those negotiations and bring the result of those negotiations back to council at a later time. So that council would not be at a risk of being caught without a code of conduct, but we'll be going ahead positively towards coming up with a common code of conduct, with all the benefits that councillor Krater has just described, which make infinite sense, just under the gun because of the existing legislation. That's the only reason why I propose not deferring, but certainly it makes sense to put this in place and then pursue with councillor Krater, so.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, that makes a lot.
It makes so much sense.
That does. I've got councillor Ayone, Cario, and Morocco. To that point, councillor?
Well, yes, it was just a point I wanted to speak to, if that's okay.
I'll come back to you, I'll come back to you. Councillor Ayone?
Thank you. There's two recommendations before us, and I, when we actually get to a vote on whatever it is, I'd like them split, please. Number one is to hire a code of conduct for members of council. And I've, quite frankly, in the recent past, become quite knowledgeable about the integrity commissioner, the ombudsman, and how this should work. I too have read almost every code and decision made in the past little while in regards to integrity commissioners. And I'll say, I think that we should be hiring an integrity commissioner. I think number one should pass. And I think we should, we do have a code of ethics, by the way, and a code of conduct. We've passed it, so we have an existing one. But in order to have public debate, and we should, you are in months of public debate right now for a document that's so important at the region, to pass it tonight and ram it through without any public input, I think is, is not the right way to do it. I think we should hire an integrity commissioner, pass one, and have that integrity commissioner work to help create us, create a code of conduct with our staff. That was the, if I'm not mistaken, and both you and councillor Val Patty are here, and councillor Krater and I attended those public meetings at the region in regards to how hiring an integrity commissioner should work and how you create a code of conduct, we should have an expert advising us how to do it. I can cut and paste any document from other municipalities also, and I think this is a great document, it's something we should have had months ago, but I think we need to work with an integrity commissioner to do it. I think we should have a special public meeting, have residents be able to give input, because let's be clear, the residents are going to be able to use this code of conduct to file a complaint against us also. I think it should be standard, I think it should be debated with the public, I think it should have the same time invested as is happening at the region. I don't think this code of conduct should be passed tonight, we aren't absent one, we just don't have an extended one. As for number two, whether you use one or two makes absolutely no difference, under the municipal act, you only have the ability to impose a reprimand and/or penalty of pay up to ninety days. You don't have any wiggle room there. The integrity commissioner doesn't have any wiggle room there either. You can only do one or the other. So whether he does it, or we do it, or she does it, or we do it, doesn't make an ounce of difference, there's nothing more you can do. We're governed under the municipal act. Anything outside of that is not something this council has control on. So I think number two is a moot point, but it's definitely something that can be debated by council. But I think we should pass one, have a public meeting, have public input, and have the integrity commissioner we hired participate in that.
Thank you. Councillor Cario, and then Morocco.
Thank you, worship. I, I think we should pass this tonight, and I don't disagree that there could be some public input after. We can amend anything we do. We can pass this code, and it can be amended anytime. If we see something that someone else comes up with that we like, that should be in our code, we can put it in our code. I think we should be leaders. I think we should be leaders and let them look at what we passed, and if they come up with something that's a little bit better, we can always incorporate it into our code. You know, there's some things that the region's talking about that I, and I've been following that I don't like. I don't like the fact that they think that you should be under the code of conduct sometimes and not other times. You know, people expect us to, to conduct ourselves in a certain way at every opportunity. They elect us, sometimes look up to us, and I think we should be here to set an example on how we act, how we behave, and how we conduct ourselves at meetings and in public and at home and everywhere. So I don't like that part of it, that I see it's happening at the region, so I wouldn't want to have that in ours. Like I said, let's be leaders, let's pass this. If we want to go ahead and have a public meeting to talk about it after, if we can always add, we can always take things out, but I, I'm for passing it, and we can amend it at any time.
Thank you. Councillor Morocco?
Yes, I'm going to stand for a minute, make sure that we do pass this hopefully tonight, because I think that it's important that we actually get that code of conduct, as our councillor, Cario, indicated. And I think that's, it's, it can amend anything at any time. I think the staff has actually put a lot of time and effort into preparing this. Not only have they prepared it, but I'm sure that all the documentations that they've already researched have had a lot of public input into it as well, and therefore, bringing back a lot of different municipalities' code of conduct, so I think that we can try and work with. And at any time, we're always open to public input, and we're always open to amending this as well. I think that we have a responsibility to get this code of conduct in place immediately, yeah. And it's too bad that the province actually should have maybe done it years ago, and maybe they should have set the code of conduct across the board for all municipalities to have one code of conduct. You know what, that's unfortunate, and I'll stand here and say that myself, meaning that that's the party of the day. But, you know, we have to make sure that we take a stand, and why do we need to wait for another organization like such the, the region or somebody else? If we've already got this started, good for our staff, good for us, good to take a stand, and let's move forward with making the motion and pass this tonight.
So did you want to make the motion, then, councillor?
I did make the motion, and I actually said that if one or two was the option, but if we need to go with the integrity commissioner, be delegated to authority, delegated authority to impose the penalties under that, or council, I think what, and I'll just check with, but I think it's just one, because basically, we're still going to get the information back, because the integrity commissioner is going to still go and be doing the report, it's going to bring back the report, and then it's going to be given to us. So I'll actually go with option one.
Okay. And there's been a request to split the, the recommendations. So I've got a motion, I need a secondar for that, a secondar by councillor Cario. Did you want to comment, councillor Campbell? Yep?
Thank you, your worship. I do believe also that we should pass this tonight. However, I would be more in favor of option two. From my limited experience, I would suggest that the integrity commissioner would have more knowledge of the specifics of the situation that we're dealing with, and I don't want to be in a position where judging my peers based on it not having all the information. I would prefer that the integrity commissioner make that decision. So I cannot support the first motion, or the first.
Option one.
But will we not be getting the recommendation back from the integrity commissioner?
We'll give it to the C E O to explain.
That's kind of confusing, because I didn't understand which one is.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, councillor.
Because I totally support that as well.
Under option one, what would happen is that the integrity commissioner would carry out his investigation, he or she would carry out that investigation, and like the integrity commissioner did here a couple of weeks ago, they stand at the podium, they make their presentation. Then it would be up to council to impose whatever of the two penalties that they would want under that section of the act. Option two would be the integrity commissioner would come and make his presentation to podium, make his presentation and say, "And here's the penalty I have imposed." So they would have already imposed the penalty, recommended the penalty, and council would not have a say in which one of those two penalties it would be. So you're delegating your authority on the penalty to the integrity commissioner that does the report.
Okay. Where am I at here? Okay, councillor Crede?
Thank you, worship. Just going to follow up, understand what councillor Cario's saying about being a leader, and it does make sense. The only thing is, I'm trying to wrap my head around the situation that we can run into, where twelve mayors, and you're in that situation. So if I'm understanding everything correctly, and I know I do, we can have that situation where someone can file a complaint against you under our code of conduct for Niagara Falls, but can also file a complaint against you under the regional's code of conduct for exactly the same reason, nothing different, and you'd be found guilty in Niagara Falls, but not guilty at the region. So we can run into that. So that's where I have, that's why I have the concern, I just think there should be one step. But I realize what you're saying, how difficult it is to get all the municipalities to get, I just, and the only other thing is, I do believe, and not trying to contradict with what you say, but it almost, you know, it'd almost be like saying we're going to have a planning matter, well, we'll, we'll vote to rezone the land, and then we'll listen to the public after the fact and decide if we want to change our minds then. I know it's not a, but, you know, you kind of get that feeling. I think, I think at the very least, we should at least have one meeting to let the public look at this and just say, have some input, or do you support it, or do you have any suggestions? I think we at least owe them that. That's the only reason that I don't, that I won't be able to support it, because I think we owe it to the public. It is such an important document, and it goes to our credibility as a council, that we're open, we're transparent, we're going to let the public have some input into a major document like this, and that's why I feel strongly about it. Not trying to be critical any way of the staff or what they put together, because again, I can see they've done a lot of good work on this. So that's why I can't support it, only because I think the public has a right, that's the only reason. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are you under way?
Mr. Mayor, just the one comment, that if, and really the only ones that this applies to would be the twelve mayors. And I would think that, once integrity commissioners are in place and there was a complaint made, I think the first thing that, that, if it was against a mayor, that the integrity commissioner would determine, is that in the carrying out of your duties as the mayor, or is it a member of regional council? Because when the mayors sit on regional council, they are members of council, they're not the mayor. So I, I would think the integrity commissioner's first job would be to find out where that breach of the behavior or, or code occurred, and it would be that integrity commissioner that would carry out the investigation. You, I don't think you would have two integrity commissioners simultaneously carrying out two different investigations about that individual. So I'm pretty sure that's how the process would, would follow through.
Councillor Ayone?
Thank you. If we're going to pass this tonight, then I guess ask the questions through all the different issues that I have with this, because I thought we'd have a chance to debate. First of all, I just want to say, councillor Krater, a number of times said, you know, "I don't want to contradict staff, I don't want to..." Debate is open discussion. You don't have to agree with everything, that doesn't mean you're being critical, it's called debate, that's what we're supposed to be doing here. So I'm, I'm not, I, I just think, having a difference of opinion doesn't mean you are being critical, it's just not what you think, it's just not what I agree with. I'd like to go to Purpose and Principles, one point three D. "The conduct of each member demonstrates fairness, respect, and differences in a duty to work with other members together for the common good. Also, A, the decision-making process of council is open, accessible, and equitable, and respects the city's governance structure. How would they deem to be breached?" So through staff, as this, as you're saying, these will be our rules, explain to me what we would do to have those two items breached.
Well, that'd be the integrity commissioner, that would be, you're looking at this, not staff or council.
No. The rules have to be in place for all of us. If you are passing these as the rules that we have to conduct ourselves on, I need to understand them. So what exactly does our staff think the decision-making of process is open, accessible, equitable? What, what exactly does that mean? And "The conduct of each member demonstrates fairness, respect, and differences," we're apologizing here for not agreeing with each other. That's, disagreeing with each other isn't, isn't a crime, it's called political debate. So can you explain to me what that actually means? I don't have a problem with you passing this, though I think it's the wrong thing to do right now, five beats four, but I want to understand what you're passing. And there are dozens of clauses in here that I'm going to ask questions on, because I'm not quite clear what staff's trying to get across.
Well, I, I'm going to ask our C E O to talk to it, but I would say, these are the purpose and the principles, and then as you go through it, there's the actual, the member shall, the member shall not, I mean, these are just purpose and principles. I think these are kind of general opening preamble to the actual rules and regulations that we're going to abide by. So that's my take, and I don't know if there's a different interpretation, but we'll assist.
But if that's not my take, I'm allowed to ask the question here. And that's all I want, is I want to understand this document before you pass it.
I don't think anyone's questioning or limiting debate.
So I, I would say that, Mr. Mayor, to your point, that the preamble, if you were, the purpose and the principle are guiding, guiding overarching principles that would govern your behavior. The integrity commissioner would be guided by those overarching principles, but it's, it's some of the detail in terms of the breaches, where he would be using those as guiding principles, he or she guiding principles, to determine, when you get into the further detail on the breaches, because the specifics come in the actual different articles in the document. So one of the things that they would be, if you look at D E, for example, that each member demonstrates fairness and respect for differences, that's a guiding principle. In his findings on a specific breach, it may offend that principle, but the breach is going to be in the detail of the other articles, whether it be on, you know, social media or harassment, use of city property, those are where the details are going to be found in terms of breaches. So, Mr. Mayor, do you have comments? Those are, most documents will have overarching general principles that will guide that individual during their investigation, and that's how I would view those, those principles in one point three.
Thank you. Councillor?
A, the decision-making of council needs to be open and transparent.
Well, again, it, the same thing applies. There may be a complaint that, you know, that there was some, you know, secret meeting taking place, or some secret discussion taking place, that they may have evidence that in fact it occurred. And this is just, again, a guiding principle to say, well, the process should be open and accessible. So it would be a guiding principle that would lead him or her to determine that if there was evidence that showed there was a meeting that went on improperly, that's a, that's an overarching principle that would guide them, so.
Councillor?
So the comment was made at the beginning of this, the ombudsman has no dealings with the integrity commissioner. That's not quite true. The ombudsman oversees the integrity commissioner's office. So any investigation done by an integrity commissioner can be investigated by the ombudsman's office, that's a fact. So they sit under the auspice of the ombudsman. So as you're going through the, the actual document, then.
Can you give clarity on that?
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't believe that's a true statement. We actually have a letter in our possession. Let me rewind the tape a bit. When we had a, a request of this council to investigate an incident here several months ago, the first call I made was to the ombudsman's office, and they say, "We don't get involved in those complaints. You must hire an integrity commissioner." Came back to this council, and that's exactly what we did. The letter from the integrity commissioner basically said, "They do not get involved in integrity commissioner complaints." That you hire an integrity commissioner, the code guides the integrity commissioner, the integrity commissioner does his report, and that's the end result. And that's exactly what we did.
Councillor?
And I have to say, that's wrong. I know that because I'm going through the process right now. I will forward you the, the letter from the ombudsman that explained to me, they do not get involved while the integrity commissioner is within his investigation. But once the investigation and the results have been provided to a council, and if somebody complained, files a complaint about the integrity commissioner's conduct and/or how he conducted his investigation, the ombudsman investigates that. And I will tell you, I already have confirmation from the ombudsman's office that is taking place right now in regards to Mr. Duxbury's report. I told you I was going to do it, I did it the next morning, the investigator's already been allocated. So I know of what I speak, I'm not going to stand here and, and talk about something that's not fact, so I can happily provide you with that direction from the ombudsman's office. There are, you, you, you have to separate those two issues. They don't get involved during the investigation, but they do investigate how that Integrity Commissioner conducted it while it was taking place. Not while it's actually taking place. So I just want to clarify that. I'm not gonna stand here and say something that you can correct me on when I'm in the midst of that process right now.
Did you have any other things you want to talk about on the Code of Conduct?
I do. Under compliance with the code, 4.3B, no member shall obstruct the Integrity Commissioner or any municipal official involved in applying or furthering objectives or requirements of this code in carrying out such responsibilities or pursuing any such objective. Define obstruct, please.
Sounds self-explanatory to me.
Well, I, I would view that as interfering in any way with the investigation.
Okay, so the Integrity Commissioner has rules on how they do their investigation and how somebody has to participate in that investigation. You have that highlighted in this document. At the last council meeting that I was at, the inference was made that I didn't participate in the investigation with Mr. Duxbury. I have 24 emails that say different. I have 10 emails that show he didn't respond to me once. Didn't respond to one question I provided. So in this document, how do you tighten up how an Integrity Commissioner does their investigation? Because obstruct has lots of different premises. So set rules. If you give a rule, and the Integrity Commissioner has rules on how you have to conduct yourself, how can this council overrule if you follow the rules of the Integrity Commissioner's office?
Well, I think what the Integrity Commissioner said is, you refuse to meet with them.
Your worship, that's quite.
Yes, Counselor.
That's quite.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but I think our motion here is to deal whether we're gonna pass a Code of Conduct, not to deal with another issue that's already being taken care of and that's already been acted upon. I don't think that's what we're here to do. You want to debate what's happened here with the counselor and whatever, but that's not what we're doing right now. I think that we, as elected officials, it's pretty simple. We have a responsibility, as elected officials, to act in an according manner. We have a responsibility to do a due diligence as an elected official. We are supposed to act and conduct ourselves in a professional manner, not just part of the time, but all the time. That's the way I take it as an elected official. And I truly believe that we do have a responsibility, as they stated back in 2006, when they actually put in the amended act, to actually bring forward a Code of Conduct for us. It's long overdue, and I think that it's about time we take a stand and actually start putting something in place. And this needs to be moved forward. It's plain and simple. I don't want to get into any other issues that have taken place. I think we're dealing with this right now. And eventually, after this is dealt with, then we could actually make amendments once we have public meetings or other consultations that people want to. But I think we need to act now and do something responsible, and act like we are mature elected officials doing our due diligence for our constituents.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Yes, Counselor.
And I agree with her. Number seven, in how you're gonna, in compliance with the code, undue use of influence. No member shall use their status as a member of council to improperly influence the actions or decisions of staff or others to the private advantage of the member or his, or her family members, friends, associates, business, or otherwise. Can you, I, I already thought that was part of our policy. This council can only act as a whole. No council can call staff and say, I want this done. And it's done without the will or support of council. So can you explain that to me?
I don't know, self-explanatory, Counselor, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, but it's not. Because we're supposed to be here discussing this document. I'm asking questions. You think it's self-explanatory, I don't. So I'm asking staff to explain that, please.
CAO?
Counselor, I'm, I'm just not quite sure what you want me to explain. It's.
Is that not already what we do?
It is, but it's restated here because you're formalizing it as a policy tonight. It, it, in my mind, makes perfect sense to repeat it in this document.
Is it already a policy of the city that that can't happen?
Well, we, it currently is in our Code of Ethics. We're saying.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the Code of Ethics and policy that we have today, what the new legislation passed in May of this year is indicating, and this was even raised by Mr. Duxbury in his report, and by the Ombudsman on a couple of occasions to us, is that you should have an independent document that specifically and exclusively deals with council. That's what this report does tonight. And you ask why that clause is there? Because you should repeat it in this document that will, will apply only to council if passed tonight.
And, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something that wasn't already in existence. I mean, the, the former clerk told us that 100 times, if he told us once. This council cannot act independently, they have to act as a council of the whole. You can't be directing staff or, or abusing your position to get things done for you personally. I just wanted to make sure that that existed before tonight. That's all.
Is there any other questions you have, Counselor?
Yes. 12.2, members shall seek council approval for the use of their names or position and title in the official name of any event where fundraising activities occur. So we have to come here, get a motion of council to be Counselor Iannone or Counselor Strange is holding an event for important issues in the public? Because we haven't done that before, up to now, so I'm just curious. Do we have to come here? And if, if I want to host something very much like the, the two fundraisers I did for mental health awareness, or Counselor Strange just did for cancer awareness, do we have to come to council and get a motion that we can be Counselor Iannone or Counselor Strange hosting this event?
Well, what that says, Counselor, is that if you're gonna be using your formal council title, that's what that section says.
So we have to come here prior?
You would have to inform council that you as Counselor Strange are running that event. I think that's what happens most cases anyway. But if you're out there just as an individual running an event, you do not need, you don't need that. If you're gonna use your formal council name, because council would have to know if there was an event that a council was running that was not befitting of the image or whatever the community, and you're using your council moniker to that event, you know, I think this council should have the ability to say, you shouldn't be using your council name for that event. So that's what that section says.
Thank you. So that's just for fundraising events?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Call a motion. Okay, we've got a request to call the, call the motion to that, to that, Counselor?
No, I just wanna, how does this relate to a council member with respect to staff people? If there is harassment or some kind of individual on staff that is being harassed by a member of council? Does this cover that in any way here?
To you, Mr. Mayor, it could. But there's also Bill 168, which refers to the workplace. So staff could, if they felt threatened or harassed, could file a, a complaint under Bill 168. That could be one avenue they could take. I guess there, there is another avenue where it, it could be a, a complaint under the Integrity Commissioner. It would be one or the other. I would think in most cases, it was a harassment complaint, and it was an employee that was being harassed by a counselor. They would follow under Bill 168 and follow that process through.
Yes, Counselor.
And that's sitting in our present Code of Ethics right now and in our harassment in the workplace policy. So if in the past, any complaint about a counselor had gone to the CAO, the head of HR, the city solicitor, well, actually, council can only go to the CAO. So if our complaint goes to, if a complaint from a staff member or a fellow counselor had been made to the CAO, would that have had to be based on the Code of Ethics we have in place right now? Automatically investigated?
To you, Mr. Mayor, it's not under the Code of Ethics. Under Bill 168, we, I'll defer to the HR director, we have an obligation. So as soon as we receive a complaint, we have an obligation to carry out an investigation under Bill 168 on that complaint. So that unfortunately happens quite regularly. And the HR director and, and his staff are, it's not something we would come to council and ask for approval for. It's, it's basically an automatic under the provincial legislation.
Yes, Counselor.
Thank you. Here is our harassment, respect in the workplace policy. And it says that if any complaint has been made to a director, it automatically has to be referred to Mr. Dark and investigated on a member of council. I'm not talking about staff, just in regards to the nine of us. So if you've received a complaint about a member of council prior to tonight, you would have had to, under Bill 168 and our harassment policy, file a complaint with Mr. Dark, and Mr. Dark would have had to have that investigated. I just want to make sure I understand.
That's correct.
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna call the vote. There's a motion before council. We're gonna split the vote. Yes to that point, Counselor?
Thank you. I have. I just, I'm gonna be voting against the motion. And I just want to make it clear. Certainly not opposed to what we're going forward. I just feel very strongly that.
Yep.
That the public deserve and have the right to at least have some input before we pass it as opposed to afterwards. And that's the only reason. I still think your, your point's well taken, that we should be a leader in that. There's nothing wrong with that. But I just feel strongly about the public input part of it.
Well, I feel good that we can always amend this. And I've got a feeling when the Regional comes up with one, or the Province does, that we can adapt that. But in the meantime, we have something to live by. And I think people want us to hold council to high standards, and I think this will do that. So we're gonna call Recommendation 1.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counselor?
In Recommendation 1, it says the Code of Conduct and the Integrity Commissioner appointment process be attached. I'd like to support the, support hiring an Integrity, putting an RFP out for an Integrity Commissioner, but I do not want to support this document because I also think it should have public input, and it shouldn't be rammed through in one evening. So can we split that actual number? So vote on hiring an Integrity Commissioner. But not, I, I'd like a vote for hiring an Integrity Commissioner, then a vote for approving this Code of Conduct.
I'm gonna ask our clerk.
Can that be done?
Well, I'm gonna ask our clerk to make a ruling if that can be separated or if one is integral to the other part in, within one.
Well, since we have a motion on the floor already, presented by Counselor Morocco, we could ask for a friendly amendment there.
Okay.
I can't support it.
Okay, so Counselor, we're gonna, we've got a motion moved by Counselor Morocco. And second. Recorded vote? We're gonna get a recorded vote, Mr. Clerk?
Okay, if I'm understanding this correctly, it looks like we're just going to vote on firstly, the recommendation listed as number one in the report. So we're, we'll be passing a recommendation for the Code of Conduct of members of council and the Integrity Commissioner appointment process attached to this report as then one be approved. Answering in favor or opposed, Counselor Campbell?
I have to ask a question. Are we voting on whether it's council or maybe?
No, that's the second part. Right now, we're just doing.
We're just splitting it for Recommendation number one.
I didn't quite hear, I'm sorry to interrupt. I didn't quite hear what the clerk said. Voting on.
We're just voting right now because it's been asked to split the recommendation on Recommendation number one as listed in the report.
And that is the Code of Conduct? And the appointment of the Integrity Commissioner attached? Just pointing on the Integrity Commissioner, that's it?
The Code of Conduct and the Integrity Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Counselor Crater?
Opposed, thank you.
Counselor Iannone?
Opposed.
Counselor Kirio?
In favor.
Counselor Morocco?
In favor.
Counselor Pietrangelo?
Yes.
Counselor Strange?
In favor.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
And Mayor Diodati?
In favor.
And it's passed.
Okay, thank you. So Recommendation number two, we've got a motion that council, but right now, currently, Counselor Morocco made the motion that we go with option number one, where council would impose the penalty. That would have been recommended by the Integrity Commissioner. So the Integrity Commissioner will make a recommendation, council will make, impose the penalty. Okay, so, and that's been seconded by Counselor Thompson. So that is part two.
Okay, recorded vote?
That'll be recorded as well.
Okay, part two to the motion, recommendation that council choose one of the following options. Actually, I'll just reread that. That council imposed the penalties under Section 223 of the municipal law. Answering in favor or opposed, Counselor Campbell?
Opposed.
Counselor Crater?
In favor.
Counselor Iannone?
In favor.
Counselor Kirio?
In favor.
Counselor Morocco?
In favor.
Counselor Pietrangelo?
Yes.
Counselor Strange?
In favor.
Counselor Thompson?
In favor.
And Mayor Diodati?
In favor. Thank you. So we're gonna move on to our planning portion of our council meeting. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're now into the planning portion of our council agenda. We're gonna deal with PBD 2017-24. And I now ask our city clerk to bring us forward.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed plan of vacant land condominium at the lands on the north side of Oldfield Road, east of Dorchester Road. Notice was given in accordance with the regulations by prepared first-class mail on Friday, June 9, 2017, to all owners of land within the area to which the application applies, and to all owners of land within 120 meters of the applicable land. Anyone who wants notice of council's decision shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I now ask our Director of Planning, Mr. Hurlovich, to explain the purpose of this application.
Thank you, worship. This property is a parcel of land on the north side of Oldfield Road, east of Dorchester Road, and it's adjacent to the Oldfield Road Plan of Subdivision. To the north of the property is a hydro 1 corridor. To the south are provincially significant wetlands. To the east is actually a vacant property now, but proposed for townhouses. And further east are, is a plan of subdivision largely composed of single-family houses. The property itself is .087 hectares, probably about one acre in size. It's proposed that this property be divided into vacant lots, which would be then sold for 35 townhouse condominium units. The lot area per unit is 249 square feet. Council will recall this land was previously, before them, for rezoning. It was subsequently part of a committee of adjustment application, which reduced the lot area from 250 square feet, or square meters, rather, to 249 square meters per unit. The applicant, as I said, is proposing a vacant land condominium for 35 units. The lands were originally intended to be a stormwater pond, but due to infrastructure design, the pond was no longer necessary. So the land is now available for development. Currently, there is a mound of topsoil that was stripped from the adjacent lands installed on this property. The plan of condominium is intended to allow the property divided and sold as separate units. The plan will have a common roadway, visitor parking, and amenity areas. The scale and height of the proposed buildings are compatible with the surrounding dwellings. The developer will be required to enter into a condominium agreement with the city. The land is developed as a vacant land, and therefore, it's not subject to site plan control because the condominium agreement will control the development matters. The official plan designates these lands as residential. There's a special policy attached to these lands, which allows the lands to be developed in advance of a secondary plan for the stormy waters area, provided that it meets the appropriate provincial densities of 53 jobs and people per hectare. The proposed development has a density of 40 units per. The proposed development has a density of 40 units per hectare and about 50... Excuse me, 100 persons per hectare, which will assist in meeting the densities in the secondary plan area. Proposed development is considered compatible with multiple housing forms. The zoning for the property, it's zoned, as I said previously, as residential low-density group multiple. There was a variance obtained, which reduced the lot area requirement per unit from 250 square meters to 249 square meters. This allowed the development of one additional unit, so going from 34 to 35 townhouses. The staff has concluded that the application does comply with the official plan, is compatible with the surrounding development. It will assist in providing housing choices within the city and that the city, regional and Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority interests are addressed through the conditions attached to the report. The staff is therefore recommending that the Oldfield Phase Four vacant land plan of condominium be draft-approved, subject to the conditions attached to Appendix A to the report, that the mayor or his designate be allowed to sign the draft plan within 20 days of council's decision and that the draft approval would be given for three years, after which the approval will lapse unless an extension is granted and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the condominium agreement and the documents required for the future registration of the subdivision when all matters are addressed to the satisfaction of the city solicitor. Those are the highlights of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlovich. Are there any questions from Mr. Hurlovich of council? Okay, seeing none, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives. And if the party has not made an oral or written submission at this public meeting, council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this draft plan of vacant land condominium. Is there anyone here other than the applicant who wishes to address council? Okay, seeing none, council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative.
All right, good evening, council. My name is Jordan Vanderhooven and I'm a planner for Upper Canada Consulting. And I'm here today representing our client, Mountview Homes, in regard to this application. So a little bit of background for the site, kind of touching upon what was previously stated, is that the site was previously subject to a zoning bylaw amendment, which was approved by council on October 25 of 2016. This amendment permitted the rezoning from permissions for a stormwater management pond to now permit the residential uses proposed in the application. And in regard to granting draft approval, there were no objections upon circulation to the region, municipal works, transportation services, parks design, fire services, then PCA, Hydro One, Bell Canada and Canada Post, as all potential concerns are covered in the conditions of draft approval in Appendix A. And so our client slash the owner of the site, Mountview Homes, is ready to move forward with the application and is in agreeance with staff's recommendation to grant draft approval as seen in the recommendations report. So a little bit of history. So the Old... So the Oldfield subdivision. So the subdivision is located in the Drummond community, identified in the official plan and is in the southern portion within the city's urban area. The first two phases of Oldfield consist of 245 single-detached dwellings and 10 townhouse blocks. While the third phase, which abuts to our site to the east, consists of 10 townhouse blocks as well... Or sorry, the first two phases consisted of six townhouse blocks. Well, the third phase, which abuts to our property, consists of 10. So the subject site fronts onto Oldfield Road, as highlighted... Fronts onto Oldfield Road, which is an arterial road. So the application, the plan will divide the land into 35 townhouse units with private road access. As mentioned before, the site is located on arterial road and will provide two access points onto Oldfield Road. The plan meets all requirements in terms of official plant site density targets and zoning bylaw restrictions due to the rezoning amendment, which was approved by council in October of 2016. And in regard to the surrounding uses and impacts on adjacent properties, north of the site is a hydro corridor and south of the site is a wetland where no residential dwellings exist and are permitted. East of the site is Phase 1 to 3 of the Oldfield subdivision, which is currently under construction and will have townhouses, which are currently... Which is a currently vacant site budding to the east, but will have townhouses in the future. And to the west of the site is a small parcel, which will be the final phase of the subdivision. And based on the surrounding uses, we believe that there will be no negative impact on these properties. Visitor parking and amenity spaces provided on the site. And overall, the plan is in complete accordance with the approved zoning. So the concept plan for the units is to consist of two-story townhouse dwellings. The unit concept design fits in well with the first three phases of the subdivision and will not have a negative impact on new residents in the previous phases and the design conforms to the surrounding area slash future surrounding dwellings. And so in conclusion, our client is in agreeance with staff recommendation on the approval of draft plan status and the related conditions. Thank you, and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of council? Yes, Counselor Ryanoni?
We are... We have, for a very long time, been getting complaints from residents who live on Dorchester Road in regards to the heavy trucks, the dump trucks, the mixers, everything that goes down their road. We've all been getting them recently. We got one this evening, a resident who is opposed to this. How are we gonna enforce to the residents that there'll be an alternate road used and the heavy trucks going down Dorchester Road are gonna be discontinued? Because right now, we've dealt with this issue more times than we can count. They don't believe us when we tell them we're going to find a way to reroute them because the rerouting's not taking place. So how are we going to enforce that?
Do you have a transportation plan in that regard?
Um, I do not have a transportation plan on me in that regard. I know for this site that it is just direct connection off the arterial road, Oldfield Road. So I believe in regard to, um, I don't know, it'd be pretty typical. We'd have to buy by all the standards that would be, I don't know, appropriate for all other subdivisions within the city.
Counselor?
Thank you. And with the emails we've recently got from Ms. Bain and the email we got today, we told them before Oldfield Road would be used as the arterial road and the arterial road is still being utilized... The one that's being utilized is Dorchester Road. So we have complaints of dump trucks going down with no tarps off, houses being... Foundations being ruined because they keep hitting the same bumps in the road all the time. They start at 4:00 in the morning, they go till late at night, Sundays also. I mean, the residents aren't making these things up and we don't seem to be able to provide them any relief. How are we going to enforce that they use Oldfield Road and not Dorchester? Because if you have a transportation plan, can that be provided to us?
Yeah, I think for this site, the only access to the site is actually off Oldfield Road.
Mr. Hurlovich, did you want...
It is just a private...
Sorry, thank you.
Yeah, if council takes a look at the map, the only way to reach Oldfield Road is from Dorchester or Drummond, which is not shown, but Drummond is to the east. So the trucks have to come along Oldfield and either go up Dorchester or up Drummond Road. I suppose they could go, you know, west down Dorchester towards Chippewa Creek Road, travel along Chippewa Creek Road, which is basically a torrent chip road. I don't know that that makes sense. That road will be broken down quickly. So I fail to understand the counselor's question as to how we would fly the trucks out.
Yep, Counselor?
I think the residents would like to see us fly the trucks out because their homes are being damaged. This isn't a new issue. Now they're looking at a couple of years more of development out there. We need to have some sort of method to alleviate the traffic that's going down that road. It's terrible. If you've ever gone to sit on Ms. Bain's front porch and watch the trucks go down, it is endless and it really does start at 6:00 in the morning. We got the same complaint today by... I can't... I'm sorry, the gentleman's name is eluding me. But we got the same complaint today. They are putting up with it every day as they have for years. We've told them we can fix the problem. How are we gonna fix it?
Well, my question to staff is, do we not have a 7:00? Are they not allowed to... Or don't they have to wait until 7:00 to start construction in the city? Mr. Judge?
The noise bylaw is... It doesn't regulate that. It basically says construction equipment, 7:00 in the morning to 9:00 at night. And then on weekends, on Sunday, it's from 9:00 to 9:00. So, you know, so we can send out letters to the contractors. What we hear from the contractors is that it's the subcontractors who are making... Who are driving the vehicles in off-hours. But we can send them a reminder that they have to... Cannot be on the roads prior to 7:00 and have to be off the roads by 9:00 p.m.
I guess it's a good... It's a good start, at the very least, to send them a letter. But it's frustrating, for sure it is. Yes, Counselor?
Through you to Mr. Holman. Have we sent the contractors those letters over the last couple of years?
Mr. Holman?
Mr. Mayor, we've been trying to wrestle with this since, I think, original complaints go back to 2011, when the Thundering Waters condo development was under construction. And we've been working with the developer and trying to use the clause in the subdivision agreement that reminds them of the noise bylaw parameters. Unfortunately, the developer's coming back to us and saying, "Well, okay, but those people don't work for us and we don't have control over their operations and they hired subsequent people." And so it's been ineffective for us to use a subdivision agreement to deal with something like noise. Now, we have been able to cut down on dust fouling the road. We've patched potholes, we've fixed shoulders. And thanks to the patience of some of the residents that are living in that area, we've been able to work through those issues. The noise one is something that we've really struggled with. And we can send the letters out if you want, again, to the various contractors that are being reported that's violating this. The fact of the matter is, they're on the site, they have a license, they can operate their vehicles in accordance with the Highway Traffic Act. And we can't really stop them.
What's the consequence if they start before 7:00? Do we... Is there anything that we can...
Well, we would have to take precautions or take the steps through enforcement of our noise bylaw. And I'll have to pass that over to Alice, I guess, or to the solicitor who can tell you what the process might be for that taking those down.
I mean, I don't know if it's a volume thing or a speed thing, if we had to slow the traffic down. Maybe we need to do something like that. I don't know. Maybe we need to refer that piece to our staff to help mitigate some of the traffic and transportation. Yes, Mr. Solicitor?
I think the really only enforcement's only effective if you've got somebody who can catch them. So I think if you really wanted to crack down on this type of thing, we have to have people in the field who are there when the offenses take place. So that would... That might... We could look into... You know, unfortunately, that guy's not here, but anyway. What we could look into developing some kind of scheme and place it out for you, still with the kind of costs and so on, that sort of enforcement could be. But with noise violations, you have to catch them doing it, especially when you're dealing with a tenor people, as Mr. Holman describes. It's not like a factory or even a barking dog. It's at the same house all the time. These guys are gonna be coming and going and you're gonna have to catch them in the act. You know, as Mr. Holman was explaining, when we go to see the contracts, you know, it's the subs who are doing it. When you go see the subs, he says, "The contract." So you actually have to see it so that you don't get the he said, she said.
Okay, thank you. Counselor?
So is the solicitor asking... Should we make a motion? I'll put a motion on the floor that the solic... That they bring back... Staff bring back a report giving us options that we can do for enforcement and that we would implement in a very timely manner. But I want to say, failing that, I would rather see us tell the residents what Mr. Holman just said. Outside of that, there's really nothing we can do. And they understand there's really nothing we can do than us saying to them on the phone, "Okay, we'll get somebody on it right away." And they expect us to fix the issue. I'd rather be blunt with them and say, "They're not... You're not doing anything wrong." This is how they're gonna have to do their job rather than us saying, you know, politically, it sounds great for us to say, "Okay, let us fix it." But if the reality is we can't, I'd rather tell them that.
Well, we can do that after because we have a public meeting going on right now. So after we can do...
Okay, I'll do that when you close this round.
Counselor Crater, do you want to speak to that issue too?
I did. I... First, I want to thank Mr. Holman and his staff. I've probably been in touch with them by email and by phone a number of times over this issue. And they sent me a copy of the subdivision agreement. I analyzed it to see if there's anything, could we put a greater deposit on the developer so that if he's violating the subdivision agreement that dealt with noise or the trucks or... That he'd pay a financial penalty. And I thought, maybe that's something the council should look at. It's exciting when we see development. There's nothing wrong with that. But it isn't exciting when you lived on that area and all of a sudden, your world has changed. And Counsel Ryanoni is right. For the people who live on Drummond Road or live over on Dorchester, every day, that's what they see constantly. And yeah, there's a frustration because it feels like... And she's quite right. It just feels like nobody's doing anything and they have... We don't live there. It's not what we see every day in front of us. I saw it every day in front of my house, trucks going by and the noise, the dust. I'd be down at the council, I'd be down and say, "You know, ask him. He gotta do something. I live here." The other thing is the roads being destroyed. So, you know, that was a question I asked. Who's gonna pay for that road? When Oldfield's done, who's gonna pay for the destruction of Drummond Road and Dorchester? I'm not being critical of these, not at all. But... And I was assured that the developer's gonna be responsible. Am I correct? The damage that's done, and there is a lot of damage. Those trucks are heavy. Drive out there and you'll see it. And is it a dust bowl? Yes. In fact, in some places out there in Oldfield, the subcontractors, they use some of the area as a landfill. And you can go out there and you can smell it. And we're sitting in this room and it's kinda nice. We don't have... But if you had the garbage that's out there where some of these people are living that they're seeing, sitting right here in the center of the council, we'd be screaming, "Why would you bring that in here? That's not right." So that's the world they live in every day. I think what frustrates me is we have development for the right reason. But in our excitement for development, we forget about the people who live there. We forget about the consequences that they're facing every day. And when they call any of us, I don't have an answer to give to them. For example, I'm getting more calls now. "We need more police camp." In fact, I talked to Inspector McCafferty. The residents down there want more policing. They want police down so they can watch the trucks so they can speed them. It's a moving violation. It's not one that our city staff is gonna go out there and issue speeding tickets and they feel they're speeding. They don't have the tarps on. Dust is flying everywhere. Moving violation. That's the police. So now there's more of a demand for police because of the things that are going on. So there's no... You're right, there's no simple answer. Can you solve all these before I sit down?
Sorry, the issue of...
No, I'm sorry. But you... I understand what I'm saying. And I know you're sympathetic to it too. So let's... Let me just close with this. Can we do anything with the subdivision agreement to put a more... Greater deposit that they have to put down? So if there's damages or complaints or if the subcontractors that these people use are violating it, then the penalty comes off of the deposit they put down. And maybe, you know, money does talk. And if they feel that they're gonna lose it, they're gonna make sure the subcontractors they put out to are gonna follow the rules. Is that... Asking for your advice?
So, Mr. Holman, two parts to that. So one is, can we ask for more of a deposit from the developer? Number two, the road that's getting chewed up down that end, who will be responsible for fixing it?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, great questions. We can deal with items such as dust and nuisance, like blowing garbage and debris from construction through the subdivision agreement. And we can hold on to securities. We can ask for additional securities if that's the way to do it. Because that will force the developer then to include some of these responsibilities in their subsequent transactions with builders or individual homeowners. The issue of noise is not something that we can deal with effectively through a subdivision agreement because it really depends on the operator of that particular vehicle. So perhaps we can come back with some more suggestions as you have requested. To the second part of the question with respect to upgrading Drummond Road, they are collective roads. The conditions are, before construction, weren't great anyways. We're hoping that once the construction is completed there, that we would advance some reconstruction. I hate to penalize the residents who are living in this area I hate to, I hate to penalize the residents who are living in this area who have been living in a construction zone for the last seven years and reward them with more construction. But it's, we're kind of waiting for them to finish damaging what they, what they've started, and then we'll come back with some capital projects in subsequent years. Their contributions won't be through development charges, they will come through increased tax assessment, which we'll use to, to fund the replacement of those.
So maybe, I'll just close with this, Your Worship, maybe what we could look at, I think we should look at, is the thought that revisiting the subdivision agreement and tightening up the financial rules so that if there's violations to it, then they're going to pay a penalty for it. And you know what we're looking at. Maybe at the end we could, not just for this one, but for the future, because there's always development going on. So at least developers know they owe it to the people who live there, there be respect of them, to treat them with the dignity they deserve that live there. So maybe afterwards.
Yeah, afterwards, maybe you and Counselor Ione can put together a report to come back. Yeah, that's a good idea. Are there any other questions here for the presenter in regard to the proposal of vacant land condominium? Okay, seeing none, the public meeting with respect to the proposed draft plan of vacant land condominium is now concluded. Look for a motion from counsel. Counselor Carrion?
Move the recommendation.
Move the recommendation, seconded by Counselor Strange. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, onto the consent agenda, what's the, oh, no, we're going, I'm sorry. Oh, right, right, I'm sorry.
Do we need a motion for that?
Do we need a motion, Mr. Clerk?
For the.
Oh, yeah, you mean for your, yes, 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 please, did you want to make that?
So I move that staff bring back a report to give us options or schemes, as it was said, in order for us to be able to limit particularly the dump trucks that are going down without a tarp covering, covering whatever it is they have in there, because that's becoming very problematic with the neighbors around there.
Okay, and also, did you want to add to, and also the idea of the penalties, stronger penalties or stronger, if you want to include that in this report?
Yes, I would.
I'll second the motion, Worship, but I'll stick to that. Thank you.
So, did you get that, Mr. Clerk?
Did you get that?
And then to work with Mr. Holman to come back with a report on what else we can do to ensure that they stick to the rules of the subdivision and the damaging of the roads. We'll call the vote. All those in favor, okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, would you please introduce the next item on the agenda?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed secondary plan for the Grand Niagara area. Notice was given in accordance with the regulations by publishing a notice in the Niagara Falls Review on Saturday, July 17, 2017, and by prepaid first-class mail on Friday, June 16, Anyone who wants further notice shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Now, if I can get our Director of Planning, Mr. Hirlovich, to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed amendments to the official plan.
Okay, thank you, Worship. Hopefully, this presentation isn't too long, but it is, is wordy because it really is a, a large planning area. We're really covering all the land from the west side of the QEW, west to Croland Avenue, and from the Welland River in the north down to Bigger Road in the south. So it's a large area, most of which is owned by the Grand Niagara Golf Course people, but some of this land is also privately held, particularly along Montrose Road and Bigger Road. The proposal is that it is a secondary plan, it's been brought forward largely by the developer of the Grand Niagara Golf Course. It is an amendment to the official plan. It would provide detailed schedules and policies that are going to divide the, or direct the future growth and establish design criteria and protect the natural heritage of the area. This is our future growth area of the city. The Planning Act requires that amendments have at least one open house and one statutory meeting prior to adoption of the amendment. Purpose of tonight's meeting is to receive formal comments from the public. We have been working with the landowners directly affected, but we also want to have the public and, and interest groups affected by this future development share their views as well. The consultants around investments have been in consultation with city staff since 2015 to develop the secondary plan for the Grand Niagara secondary plan area. The land is approximately 330 hectares, and it includes, as I've said, vacant lands, lands of ES Fox, Minex, the proposed hospital site. The lands proposed for the hospital site will be following the provincially-led planning process. The golf course lands are currently designated open space and environmental protection, as well, the special policy area provides for development of the growth golf course and associated residential accommodation, which includes hotels. The lands are within the urban boundary, Bigger Road marks the southern extent of the city's urban boundary area. The lands are considered to be within the built area of the city of Niagara Falls. This is under the growth plan of the province, and therefore, they're not required to comply with the greenfield densities of 53 people and jobs, but they have to meet the intensification requirements under the growth plan. The area is serviced through the Grassy Brook Pumping Station, and these attributes assist staff in being able to consider the secondary plan at this time. The lands are largely to be designated residential. You can see that illustrated in the yellow tone on the map. This is where the existing golf course is now. It also includes single semi-attached street townhouses, block and stacked townhouses. There'll be approximately 1,100 to 1,400 dwelling units. As well, there are areas identified for mixed use, that reddish tone on the map. So basically, the, the mixed use is our commercial residential development and particularly multi-use buildings, which will be residential and commercial or industrial uses together. There are natural heritage areas, so the larger blocks are identified as significant woodla, woodlands, some of them are PSWs, provincially significant wetlands. The linear green lines through the plan are the existing water courses. All of these courses were studied through an environmental impact study at the time that the golf course was proposed, and identified the floodplains and the buffer areas adjacent to those. So all of those are identified for conservation use only. The employment lands, these are largely the blue lands on the map. So these, the light blue is the hospital and medical precinct campus that would be developed at the south end of the city. The darker blue lands are largely the, the employment lands. This could be manufacturing as well as warehousing and trucking facilities. The total build-out for this area would be approximately 3,800 to 4,600 people and about 3,800 jobs. The residential mixed-use area would provide between 1,460 and 1,900 dwelling units. Overall, the plan area will develop as a complete community, that is, that there will be residential, commercial, institutional, and employment uses provided within the plan. The, there are some issues with respect to separation from adjacent industry. SciTech is located to the northwest at Chippewa Creek Road and Garner Road. There is a, a existing policy in the official plan which protects an area of 1.09 kilometers from the corner of Garner Road and Chippewa Creek Road. That is the shorter line, but the furthest away arc on the right-hand side. So the official plan basically says that there can be no residential uses, no overnight accommodation within that area, no areas where there'd be assembly. The developer is requesting that that arc be reduced to a two-kilometer arc from the plant, so that is the phosphine plant of SciTech. Their arguments are that that's the same distance separation which the industry used for the Warren Woods Plan of Subdivision to the north. It's the same distance separation used between industry and Heartland Forest, and Heartland Forest has their interpretation center, a place of assembly. And so they're saying if the two-kilometer arc is a more recent arc established for those types of uses, it should be applicable here. Our staff recommendation is that, next slide, is basically that since there's no agreement, in fact, council has a letter in their package, or it was a handout today, from Jeff Wilker on behalf of SciTech outlining that they have concerns with respect to any development within those arcs. And so staff is recommending that any residential use within those arcs be deferred to allow for further investigation and discussion with SciTech. The, SciTech's position is that the 1.09-kilometer arc should be maintained, no residential accommodation and no assembly uses. As I said, given the opposing views, we're recommending that that area be deferred from consideration in this secondary plan process. The natural heritage areas, as I said, there are water courses that extend through this area, those are protected areas. There are some large blocks of land which are significant natural heritage features, but there are some adjacent areas which are considered non-significant heritage features and through the Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority's current policy regime, you can provide for the removal of that, provided you compensate with natural heritage features elsewhere. So those measures are outlined in the Appendix Three of this report and would require that they be, any, any lands that are non-significant be replaced one-to-one by, within that watershed. The preservation of existing features altogether would represent an area where they would be maintaining and restoring and enhancing the ecological functions that improve the landscape connectivity between the forested lands, that create an interior forest habitat and improve habitats for species of concern for conservation. Restoration works would guarantee the agreement with brand and the man-made features, and the timing of the restoration work would coincide with development. The planning of the proposed secondary plan is under its final review by staff and agencies. Staff is supportive of the proposed plan as it represents a detailed policy framework that will guide future development over the next 10 to 20 years. Development of the secondary plan will contribute to the provision of the city's long-term growth. Natural heritage will be protected and enhanced through the ecological natural heritage system, and the staff and agencies will complete the review. So that's part of the purpose today is to get additional comments that we can review with the various other departments and agencies. Therefore, we're recommending that council receive this report for the purpose of accepting input from the public, that this be considered a mandatory meeting under the Planning Act, and that staff continue to, with its review, and bring back secondary plan to council for a decision at a later date. Those are the highlights of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Hirlovich. Do we have any questions of counsel for Mr. Hirlovich? Yes, Counselor Morocco?
I just have one, I just want a clarification. It says redevelop of the golf course. The golf course is staying, or when this is, we're talking about.
No, no, the golf course would be gone.
So now we're going to wipe out the golf course for development?
Correct. It's urban land.
Counselor Campbell?
Yes, through you, Your Worship, Mr. Hirlovich, years ago when the golf course came into play, we made some concessions based on the use of the land with respect to roadway allowances property in the city of Niagara Falls. And I do believe that if that golf course was not going to be continuing, that the lands that we were dealing with at the time would be reverted back to the city of Niagara Falls.
Yeah, I don't know the details of that. The city solicitor might have that information, but the plan on, on the screen actually shows us, the cornrows, so the, in actual fact, Grassy Brook Road, which extends through the golf course now, we closed approximately here, there are a number of houses on the south side of Grassy Brook Road. So this plan provides for the extension of that road, so Grassy Brook extending from Montrose Road through to where it continues west towards Port Robinson. As well, we closed Croland Avenue. This plan proposes that Croland Avenue would be reopened. We do need some more discussion. The intersection of Croland with Bigger Road at the railway tracks is a dangerous intersection, so that will require some realignment and some redesign. But those two roads that you speak of are in this plan to come back and be public roads.
And would that cost of that happening be part of the, the development, or would that be attributed to the city?
That would be, they would be now developed to municipal road standards and dedicated as part of any subdivision like we would any other subdivision in town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Crater?
Thank you, Worship. You know, I do remember, you were here as well, Counselor Campbell, I remember when we approved the golf course. I remember the place being packed and all the controversy about allowing the golf course to go in. And I ended up, I supported it, not because I'm a golf.
Counselor, can you direct your comments this way, please?
Oh, you're over there, sorry, Worship.
It's okay.
But the only point I was going to make is, it was pretty controversial allowing the, but those of us, at least for myself, we supported it because it was going to protect the land. You know, they, I remember them saying, "There's no better mechanism to protect and preserve land than by putting a golf course." They're going to make sure that it stays pretty well intact the way it is. So I guess I'm just kind of saying, strange how it was yesterday, it was allow a golf course, that's going to protect and preserve the land, and now we're sort of going in a whole different direction. The golf course is gone. As one of the premier golfers in Niagara Falls, too, I'm sorry to see you go. But more importantly, I kind of feel bad because the land that we thought we were protecting and preserving for the right reasons through a golf course is going to be going to development. And the only other thing, Your Worship, and maybe I can just get an answer, I didn't know, now I just saw it for the first time, that natural heritage that, that you can, through the Conservation Authority, I didn't know the policy was you can recreate natural heritage land somewhere else and, and cover off, you know, develop over top of an existing one. I didn't realize that was, you're on the Conservation Authority, I'm just asking you. I didn't know that that, that's a policy. Is that something that's been around for a while and I just, you missed it?
I'd say we probably, we'd have to ask Mr. Hirlovich if he could comment on that.
It, it is biodiversity, by another name, compensation. So, yes, the Conservation Authority has a policy now for non-significant. So, you know, quite different than what this council dealt with previously for another development or another secondary plan where they're proposing whether a great number of provincially significant wetlands. So the PSWs are being protected, those are the green areas on this plan. So this is a PSW. This large woodlot here, it's a wet woodlot, that's a PSW. This woodlot is a PSW. Along the creek is a PSW, there are wetlands along the shore of the Welland River. So those are all protected areas, and then the creeks that flow through are protected because there is a floodplain associated with those streams as they come down to Grassy Brook and enter into the Welland River. So all of those are being protected. It's the nat, natural areas that are not of significance. So along the railway tracks, there are some natural areas in here. The proposal is that yellow area, and this is be a refinement that we'll bring forward to council in the future. That, because it's surrounded by PSWs and protected lands, is almost impossible to get at without disturbing that. So this would be an area where we would allow regeneration of the natural forest and environment in compensation for the removal of green areas in this area here. That's a one example, there are a couple of other examples as well.
All right, thank you, Worship.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yeah, Counselor Morocco?
Your Worship, just to, or maybe to, through you, to Alex or to Arceo, is this, is this a way now of the future here that we're actually going to be looking at selling off golf courses and converting them into residential whatever? I'm just kind of sad to think that, you know, what we've, this destination is known for the beauty of all of its golf courses and its vineyards, and is there no way that we can protect the golf courses that are here? I mean, people actually move down here and locate in certain areas. I know down in my area there, there's a number of people that came and selected homes down in that area due to the fact that they were surrounded by a number of golf courses and natural beauty and forestry. So I'm just, you know, it's. So I'm just, is that, is that where we're going now? We're just going to allow golf courses to be sold in, which we thought we were trying to protect some type of greenery?
Mr. Hurlivich?
And I truly don't believe in biodiversity because I don't know that they've ever tried that either, but anyway.
We don't own the golf courses, so someone privately owns them. They have now seen that they would rather develop it for residential purposes. To the council's point, I can tell you that I'm aware of one other golf course in town, we're in active discussions with that developer about converting that from golf course to housing as well. So this is not the only one.
So do we not have the authority?
No, it's private property, that's what he's saying.
So are they not, have they not been protected though and a special taxation through them as well? I think there's.
I don't, Mr. Hurlivich, do you know about?
I don't know how resident, or golf courses are taxed.
Mr. Harrison, do you have any? Mr. Beaman?
Golf courses enjoy artificially low tax rate as a result of an arrangement that was reached between the provincial government, well, NPAC, and the golf courses some years ago.
Okay, any other questions or comments of council? Okay. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission of this public meeting could result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives. Do we have anyone here other than the applicant who wishes to address council? Okay, so we can come up one at a time, if you would just state your name and state your address, please.
John Barker, I live at 134 Church Street, St. Catherine's.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
It's a 10-minute limit.
I did give a flash drive in advance of the meeting, maybe it could be shown to members of council.
All right, here's John Barker, favorite pastime, that's a very large old-growth oak tree. We're here at the Grand Niagara Golf Course, and John, would you like to say anything about this area?
Yes, this to my mind looks like an old-growth forest. Now, it was originally to be protected in the baseline report by the firm Savannah because it is recognized provincially significant forest environmental conservation area in the regional plan. But they, in the current concept plan, they took away all the forest protection of this area south of Grassy Brook Road, and they said we could actually duplicate the ecological function of this forest through offset. And they would create a new forest near Bigger Road and bigger, a mile away. How are you going to replicate an old-growth forest? Think of how long it will take, 100 years, it could all be destroyed in a tornado, it could never come to be. This is an absurd notion. And they kept quiet about it being an old-growth forest because then the absurdity of what they were proposing would be clear to everybody.
Could we now put up the, what was shown is the planning analysis by the planning director? I hope to reference it in my talk, we had green on the map, there was one with yellow? Yeah, that's fine, background's fine. Now, where I took that photograph, Adrian Williams did it, Dan Nardone's here helped me with editing, it's right there, south of the provincially significant wetland that is identified in the EIS as a significant forest. That means it's an environmental conservation area in the regional plan. That is proposed for offsetting. Now, I disagree with the planning director where it's proposed to have the offsetting. My view is that they're, from reading the EIS, that it's in this area near Bigger Road, he indicated it was in that area there. The area that he indicated that the offsetting would be done, he said it would regenerate over time, it's clearly identified in the concept plan as residential. So I believe that is a significant error in the analysis of the proposal. Now, the report, this is a dry forest. It is legal to have offsetting, although I certainly don't recommend it, for dry forests and non-provincially significant wetlands. What was attempted to do at Thundering Waters was offset provincially significant wetlands. But there is another feature, the report proposes to offset 11.3 hectares of land, which should have been clearly mentioned in the staff report, but it's not exactly mapped where it is. I was able to find out between the concept plan and the reports prepared by the proponent. Now, part of this 11.3 acres is what is called non-provincially significant wetlands. And if you read my brief to you, which was not referenced by anyone before now, you will see that in the peer review on the Thundering Waters proposal done by North-South Environmental, they indicate that is required in the secondary plan process to reevaluate the non-provincially significant wetlands. They indicate it's wrong to propose offsetting at this stage, the wetlands should be reevaluated. And I think it's also appalling that this report from Leif Lefler, we only have, because Ed Smith here, that we know about this report. He made an Access to Information Act request. We had a public meeting that was announced in the Planning Act and nobody was given the contents of this report. And we had a long discussion about.
Mr. Barker, can you keep your voice down, please?
Yes, well, I.
I know you're emotional.
I wish that you had, Mr. Mayor, that you had released this report before the meeting. Mr. Smith's report indicates continuous efforts by you to change provincial policy to permit offsetting on provincially significant wetlands.
Is that in any way related to the proposal before you tonight?
Well, what does relate is the matter that there should be a peer review of this development, and there should have been a reevaluation of the provincially significant wetlands that are proposed to be offset. We don't even have the area precisely mapped in any of the materials prepared by the consultant of where the 11.3 hectares are. I felt like I was Sherlock Holmes wandering around there to find out this area. And I followed the map and I find this old-growth forest with giant trees in an area to be offset, that the consultant did not acknowledge there were old trees, over 100 years old, giant beech trees, giant hickory, giant oak trees. Now, all my recommendations would probably only eliminate 5% of the area that could be developed. 11.3 hectares is quite small. Apart from not having the 11.3 hectares offset, I recommend a change in the road plan. There should be an extension of EPA designation from the provincially significant wetland to the Welland River that is following the natural heritage guidelines with the developers' consultants, Savannah.
Mr. Barker, direct your comments this way.
Yes.
You've got two minutes left.
Savannah cites, but does not acknowledge, if you look at, you have online, you have computers, you can go to the Ministry of Natural Resources, natural heritage guidelines, they have a map of an isolated wetland like that. They said that is completely contrary to the natural heritage guidelines. So my view, the Savannah consultants are completely ignoring the guidelines that they misleadingly cite in their document. Proposals I've made also would reduce road mortality, it would encourage cul-de-sacs and dead-ending of roads to effectively both benefit the community by traffic calming and also reduce wildlife mortality, making it a safer neighborhood for both children and wildlife. That is my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else here other than the applicant? Yes, Counselor Anoney?
Does staff have, through you, Mr. Mayor, does staff have any comment on Mr. Barker's comments that the consultants didn't give us the information we need to make proper decisions?
Mr. Hurlivich?
Yeah, your worship, at this point, I haven't looked at that EIS myself, but Mr. Barker and I spoke earlier in the week, and he did identify certain areas. I gave an example of the area that would be offset, and he identified other areas. So there are a number of areas that can be identified, but, you know, the purpose of today's meeting is to get these kinds of comments, and I think, given what we've heard tonight, we will be working with the RAND and requiring that they outline specifically for us so that we can bring back a more informed position to council. There's certainly information that's come out to me in the last week, this week, as I said, Mr. Barker was in there, Dr. Barker was in earlier this week and we spoke. So I will follow up.
Thank you. Counselor?
Mr. Barker also referenced the report that Mr. Smith made available to him, who made available to us about Leif Lefler, that.
That's right.
Why were we not given that when we are, in all the information we have to make decisions?
Mr. Hurlivich?
Typically, we don't give council all of the reports that we got. We get a planning justification report, we get transportation reports, servicing reports. We can make those available, typically we don't. But any of the counselors are welcome to contact me, I'll share everything.
Counselor?
And on that note, I'll get a copy of that, but the reality is, we don't know to ask if we don't know it's there. So I don't mind you providing all of that to me when I want to make an informed decision, but I can't ask for something I don't know exists.
In fairness, there's no decisions being made tonight, this is just for feedback.
No, I do understand that, but this is supposed to give us everything we should know to make an informed decision and.
There's no decisions being made tonight.
But this is leading us to a decision.
It is leading us there, yes.
Okay, so give me everything we need to make one.
Okay, so, Mr. Hurlivich heard that. Next speaker, yep, if you'd like to step up. Yeah, we'll get you, we'll get to everybody. You've got 10 minutes, your name and your address, please.
Daniel Nardone, 95 Glendale Avenue in St. Catherine's. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm actually just coming up here to bring some comments about this and just a little bit more broadly, but I won't go too off-topic. I guess my comments really for this development is, like I said, is essentially, say, to avoid, you know, the notion of offsetting at all costs really, because it's been scientifically unproven that, as you know, it takes a long time for nature to do, work its course. And so basically, just what I would propose is that make sure that you have 30-metre buffer zones around development to the naturalized areas so that, like, fireflies and, what do you call it, gray horned hours, I think it was, and bats basically don't get affected by, say, light pollution. And I guess just on a more, I was going to say, like, positive note about Niagara Falls, because, I mean, when Canadians think of Niagara Falls, like, the natural wonders of, well, the falls themselves, and I was just going to suggest, like, how at Brock we have a phenomenal outdoor recreational program and going, looking into the notion of, like, ecotourism, because as it turns out, the Carolinian zone of which Niagara Falls is in is very, very much, it's under threat of development, and countries like New Zealand and that, who, you know, are, you know, doing a lot of ecotourism, and they're even bringing in the film industry and stuff like that, you know, because just it's natural heritage. But really, I think, like, when you think of places like, you know, the Thundering Waters or, and there's also the Glen, the Niagara Glen, like, these magnificent areas that you could connect with, like, eco, or like corridors and wildlife corridors that they could, you know, the wildlife could go, or overpasses like you see in Banff National Park. So what I'm more or less just kind of putting out there is, like, yeah, we're in Niagara Falls, we've got this magnificent Carolinian forest, why don't we look at ecotourism as well, because I know we have conventional tourism, of course, but that's really just my comment, just to kind of put that imagination, that concept out there to you, Mr. Mayor, members of Niagara Falls City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Next, anyone other than the applicant? If you can state your name and your address, please.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening, your worship, council members. My name is Glenn Wellings, I'm a planning consultant for SciTech. And, your worship, with me tonight is Mr. Ken Milo and Ms. Amy Mather, also of SciTech. Mr. Hurlivich mentioned a detailed letter that was submitted by Mr. Welker earlier today that has been provided to council. I know there's a lot to that letter, a lot of information, but just to summarize the concerns, your worship. SciTech and its predecessors have been in the city for over 100 years, and I think council knows that. SciTech has recently expanded operations resulting in a significant community investment and many jobs, and they're simply wanting to protect that investment. Given the nature of their use, being the manufacturing of chemicals, it is an ongoing struggle for SciTech to protect its current operations from encroaching development. And it's been a struggle, and I know many counselors around this table have been here for some time and have seen SciTech from time to time, but it's, it's a constant struggle for them to protect their operations, given the nature. It's not an operation that you just pick up and move somewhere else, it's a, it's a very specialized operation with many interesting components. So the purpose of the previously mentioned arc that Mr. Hurlivich covered off in his presentation was and remains to this day, the intent is to protect the SciTech operation and the risk of that operation and the encroachment on, of sensitive land uses. There could be some complications in the event of, in the event of an emergency, and that's simply the purpose of that arc. This arc was negotiated before the Ontario Municipal Board through a hearing, I was at that hearing, and it was negotiated in good faith prior to the recent SciTech expansion. I note that point, prior to the expansion of SciTech. SciTech simply wants to ensure that any development within that, within this secondary plan area, respect the arc and that land uses beyond the arc are aware of the SciTech operations. And again, if there is an emergency situation, they need to evacuate, people need to know that SciTech is there. City staff has suggested in their staff report and through Mr. Hurlivich's presentation that the area or land uses within the arc be deferred to negotiate a solution at a future date. I'm not convinced piecemealing this issue is the best approach. I'm not convinced piecemealing this issue is the best approach. It's certainly something we'll talk more to city staff about. However, we are certainly pleased, and we have had consultation with city staff as well as Mr. Baldassera, the proponent, but I hate to set the stage that there is a chance of negotiation here. I'm not optimistic there is a solution at hand for lands within the ARC unless those lands are kept as non-sensitive uses. So I don't want to set the stage for something that may not be achievable, but, your worship and counselors, it doesn't mean we're not willing to talk and sit down with the proponent and city staff and try and work out a solution, but, but at this point, I'm not optimistic. But that's my comments, your worship, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the planner from SciTech? Yep, Counselor Thompson?
It always bothers me, you put a almost two-kilometer radius around a chemical plant, people own the lands privately, they're paying taxes on it, and yet you have that circle there where you don't want to see any kind of development. Why wouldn't you try to, and you've had government grants out there, substantial amount of money, to try to make sure if there is any concerns with respect to escaping gas, why wouldn't you try to protect within the property and within the building that you have, rather than trying to affect properties where people own them privately, pay taxes on them, and have plans of what they would like to do? We see this constantly.
Yeah, through you, your worship, to Counselor Thompson, fair question. First of all, SciTech has a fairly rigorous program of safeguarding their operation and looking after the safety of their operation, so they have a very rigorous process in place to, to, to avoid any, any issues. This ARC issue, counselor, is not a new issue. It was an issue that was negotiated, negotiated, as I mentioned, in good faith with Grand Niagara when they were developing the golf course use. And, and there was agreement, clear agreement, to avoid sensitive uses within the ARC, and that was agreed to, and now we're hearing that all of a sudden that's, that's no longer a valid agreement, and we're having concerns with that. So I appreciate the concern that they may not want to do what they want to do within, within the ARC, but at the same time, this, this is not a new issue, it's an issue that's been negotiated, an issue that's been to the OMB, and frankly, it's not an issue that SciTech's willing to reopen.
Yeah, well, that doesn't answer my question with respect to the people who own property and have plans and what they would like to do with it, and you draw an ARC around, and they're paying taxes, they have expectations, and yet it just doesn't seem fair to me.
Well, Grand Niagara, the golf course was able to achieve their plans with the ARC, so I'm not sure why this proponent can't.
Well, the golf course fits in perfect with what...
It does.
Which was the... How much, how much did we spend to put services out there? I think we're still paying now for the service, I think it was $15 million that we put the services out there.
Somewhere in that area, yep.
Yeah, because there was a big debate at the time, so there are services out there that contemplate future development and growth, so. I, I thought our staff was still working to try to determine what we're going to do with this ARC, because it's just not fair to people who live in the area, that's all. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. I've got Counselor Anoni and Morocco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the speaker. In regards to your ARC, I'm assuming that SciTech would have done a hazard identification and risk assessment to determine how much, how much distance you need within that ARC. So once you do that high rate, you have a legal responsibility to create the two-mile radius. So when you say that you're not really open to negotiating that, is that because, A, your hazard identification and risk assessment highlighted it, and B, because Grand Niagara agreed to it?
It's, it's a good question, I'm not sure I have the total answer to that. There has been risk assessment work done by SciTech, I'm not sure if Mr. Milo wants to, to come up and speak a little more to that, because he's, he's more aware of that issue than I am, but there has been work done in that regard.
And has that worked, the high rate or your risk assessment been provided to the city?
Helen? There has been a lot of modeling done and risk assessments and as far as releases or any type of, you know, adverse conditions that could take place at the plant, and the ARC was based on that science. Now, that material, those, I can't remember, I can't recall if the entire reports, but I know that part of it has been provided, and we've, there's been numerous discussions with city staff about those reports. This goes back a number of years, it goes back prior to the expansion, but it is, it is based on, on modeling and, and risk assessments.
And I ask that because very much like the Dorchester Road issue, I would rather you tell us bluntly, we have a legal liability for that two-mile ARC, it's not negotiable, it's for the safety of the residents, so that we're not doing this back and forth all the time. Once you do, once you do a risk assessment, you have a legal liability to enforce that, so if that's the reason that's here, I would rather we know that than continue to think that there might be any wiggle room. We, incidentally, have our updated emergency management plan at the end of our document here, and I would rather know whether us extending that or trying to get you to diminish your ARC would put residents at risk rather than think we could free up green space to put development to make tax dollars. I would rather put safety in front of money, actually.
Understood. You know, we're not saying that there's, there's no development with the ARC, but it needs to be appropriate and compatible with the existing use of our facility, consistent with provincial policy. So it's, it's more the sensitive uses and within that, that buffer zone that we are trying to maintain within the facility.
And that's what you risk assessed was, the sensitive uses?
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Morocco?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Just a question, how many people does SciTech employ?
Come on, back up.
Sorry.
Currently, I believe it's around 150, but, I mean, there's a lot of spin-off in the community as well in supporting of ancillary businesses as well.
I don't know how many industries that we have, industrial companies that we have in Niagara Falls and employ 150 that have the spin-off. I actually did have the privilege of going up to SciTech and doing the tour when you had the expansion, the government funding there, too, and I'll tell you, they do have a very top-notch, tight insecurity and how you deal with all your testing and that, it's always done, and it was just far beyond imagination, but it was extremely interesting to see. I don't want to be responsible to chase away more industry. I've always wanted to support and work with SciTech and make sure that, we try and make sure that we keep that industry here. There's not a lot of it, and I know that they have good-paying jobs, and we'd like to bring more industry, so I think that we should be good corporate citizens and try to work with you. And I actually support that two-mile. If this chemical company is telling us that there's this radius that they want us to stay away from, and they've been telling us for years and years, I've actually lived on Keeler Road, so we had a farm out there, I knew we were quite aware of a chemical factory that was there all those years, and, you know, we actually lived with that, and we knew about development and where not to go, as we, kids to play there and not to go near there. But, I mean, because it was, it was actually, it's more safer now than it ever was, I think back, okay, I'm only 29?
Agreed.
Forty years ago? So anyway, I have to say that I think this is really important. These people are coming to us and telling us that there's a hazard to beware of, and I'm actually taking that a little bit further and going, okay, I'm not messing around with yous, guys. If you say there's that two-mile radius, you don't need us to come near there, I'm all for it, and I think we have a due diligence after hearing this presentation from them, is that we better abide by it and maybe work with them, as Counselor Anoni has actually said. You know what, let's not play around, let's just say it's hands-off, done. So thank you very much for sharing that, I truly appreciate that.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
What are your sensitive uses?
Really, it's focusing on...
Residential?
Residential areas of assembly, things of that nature. You know, you know, things as other industry or commercial uses that are compatible within the ARC are...
Everybody is interested in industry and jobs, certainly nobody anymore than I am, and I have, still have a problem that you should be able to look after your concerns within that plant, not take other people's property away from. I, I hear all of the other arguments, development on McLeod Road, the ARC comes in and cut, they want to develop it, but the ARC comes in and cuts out a quarter of their plant, their plan that they have. Why don't you buy all of that land and solve the problem? You own the land, and if a new industry came in tomorrow and they wanted to say, oh, this is a dangerous concern for an accident, so everybody around here can't do anything with their property. Doesn't make any sense to me.
Through you, your mayor, we're really not trying to take property away from anybody or saying that they can't develop it, we're just looking for consistency in, like, like development around the property, so that it's consistent with the usage, so that, you know, if there is other industry, and there are areas around us that are zoned, heavy industrial or industrial northwest to the east of us, to the west of us, and have that, that buffer zone of other, like, industry or commercial around us, we're not trying to restrict it in no development and leave it as vacant land. That's not the objective.
Yes, Counselor Morocco?
So at the end, what they're basically saying is they'd like to have the same deal that was made in, in previous with Grand Niagara, but they don't hear that that's on the table right now, so you just want to make sure that you have that same deal, the development goes through.
Through you, your worship, to the council, the, your official plan has a policy that enshrines this ARC, so we're just saying, follow your official plan and maintain it.
Well, of course there can be, nothing's, nothing's forever, and we need to discuss that, and I agree, and I'll tell you, because now that I've heard the debate, we've got another business in the north end of the city, and they bought the land all around them, you know, and then there's no debate, they put it on title, you know, so that's the other option, rather than sterilizing all the land around you within two kilometers, that's the downside of it. The upside is their jobs, the downside is no one else can do anything with their land, they got to come to you and ask, and I appreciate that, but at the same time, you know, you can buy it, right, and then you can do what you want with it. Put a big fence two kilometers around. Okay, we're looking for the next speaker now? Sir, yeah, you've been waiting patiently, please.
Thank you.
If you can state your name and your address. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
Good evening, your worship, good evening, counselor, my name is Peter Wilk, I'm, my address is 8107 Bigger Road. Can we just put this map up? Please? Just so I can, yes, this, this one would be great. I'm here to represent my neighbor and friend, George Stewart, at 8365 Bigger Road. I'm that little rectangle in the blue hospital employment lens, yeah, right there, right by the Degrassels, and my neighbor, George Stewart, is right there, that's correct, he owns 10 acres right there, two parcels. It was a 10-acre lot, five years ago, he received permission to subdivide to a three-acre lot with permission from city planning that he could build a home, a single home, on private services, as there's no city services available. So under the proposed mixed plan designation, George, city planning has said that they will not allow a single home to be developed anymore on private services on the three-acre lot, that's all we're talking about, is that one three-acre lot, and George has, has it approved already, and I'm just here to make a formal request that the proposed mixed-use designation over the three-acre lot at 8365 Bigger Road include an exception, allowing it to be developed as a single-family residence now and in the future, whether on private services or municipal services. Is there any questions?
Mr. Counselor Thompson?
If you want some air.
No, go right ahead, that's all yours.
No. Yeah, I've looked into this myself as a result of the correspondence that came, and my background with the Health Department used to look at land for septic tank systems and private water systems, so you've got a three-acre lot out there with the sophistication with respect to private sewage systems and the improvements they've made over the years. We used to say, had to be minimum of an acre, two acres, but a three-acre lot, there should be no reason why you should not be able to build a single-family home. You also have a 10-acre parcel, does he not, there?
He has a seven-acre parcel, it was a 10-acre parcel, it's now seven acres that has a home.
Seven and three?
It's the three-acre that's vacant. He's allowed to do it today because it was granted by city planning, but if you approve the redesignation to mixed employment or mixed-use land, city planning has said they're not going to allow Mr. Stewart to build a single-family home on that three-acre lot anymore on private services, and, and, and a lawyer, you know, we had a lawyer send a request to get it in writing, and they said, no, that's why we're here to ask for city council to approve it.
Well, first of all, I think that's ridiculous, was...
Yeah, I'm going to get Mr. Hurlovich to maybe weigh in on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, this, Mr. Wilk is not 100% accurate, yes, we did have a letter from Rocky Vaca on behalf of Mr. Stewart, we did send Mr. Vaca a letter stating that, of course, Mr. Stewart can build his single-family house on this three-acre lot with private services, that's exactly what he has. We also outlined that there were other opportunities for him so that should he wish to develop in the future a more intensive land form such as mixed-use, he would have greater opportunity than just a single-family house, but there's nothing in the current planning regime that would prevent him from doing that.
Not, not currently, today, but when you change it to mixed-use, and this is the correspondence right from John Barnsley, who I believe reports to you.
Yeah, yeah, so I read that, and I read Mr. Vaca's response.
And he said he would provide this to city council.
And read this, I didn't...
Well, the response clearly says here, while not permitting single-detached dwellings...
Yes.
Mr. Stewart will enjoy significant development opportunities afforded by mixed-use designation, and we replied in writing saying, well, there's no services today, there may not be any city services 10 years from now or 20 years from now, so we want, we're formally requesting...
And in fact...
I have no problem, I have no problem with meeting with Mr. Stewart, Mr. Vaca, and whomever, if they would wish to have their property identified as single-family, these are just colors on the map.
Well, it can be, if, if we get an exception for Mr. Stewart, it could stay mixed-use, like, believe me, if sewers find their way out there or city services, and there's a demand to do something with that land, it will develop into higher-density mixed-use down the road.
Why don't we do this? Because no decisions are going to be made tonight.
Okay.
So why don't we, he's agreed to meet with Mr. Stewart, Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
And if you can coordinate that meeting, we'll get that, because tonight, no decision, this is just for...
We just wanted to make it aware, like, right now, because the next time city planning comes in, they could say, we want you to approve this, and we don't want to have to come here with a lawyer and say...
Thanks, Mr. Wilk, I appreciate you doing that, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, wait a minute, I haven't finished yet.
Okay.
I didn't agree to that. I, I think we should give them assurance that they can build on that property regardless of what they do, and if they want to make a change...
I sit on three and a half acres, and it's kind of plop right in the middle of this development, so I'm looking to understand how this is going to impact my life.
Where is your, can we say specifically where you are?
That square, right there.
Right there. So, Mr. Ilovich, is there any feedback on Ms. Aurora's property?
So, Ms. Aurora's property is here, in yellow, which is basically single family housing. She has three acres, she probably has the potential to subdivide that if she wishes in the future that these policies come to fruition, otherwise she would have a three acre, single family lot, just the way she enjoys it today.
Would it be exactly what I enjoy today? Today I have, my zoning is open space. Would I have that same, those same privileges, once all this is done?
I don't know what you mean by open space and privileges.
Well, my zoning right now is open space.
So, what can you do with your open space zone?
Well, you tell me.
Well, okay, open space means recreational uses, your worship, I understand she lived there, but perhaps-
I do live, I do live there.
So, do you wish to develop it for recreational uses?
Is open space the only thing that recreational is for?
Well, you just told me it's open space.
That's what my designation, that's what my zoning, I didn't make the designation. I'm just telling you what I have.
All right, so, I'm not sure what the speaker wishes. As I stated, she can enjoy three acres with her single family house, the yellow that's on there shows single family house. If she wishes to have a business, then we would have to identify it as a different color. I don't know what she wants.
Did you have a specific desire for your property, did you want to do something to it?
No, but I'm just a layman, I don't know all these terms, okay? So, you should be able to tell me what open space designates, and it's not just recreational, because otherwise, all the homes that are there wouldn't be, wouldn't be open space.
Well, I think all of the houses that are there pre-exist the golf course. The, there are special provisions that recognize those houses on those lots, but open space means just exactly what it means, it means recreational uses, so it could be a golf course, which is what the adjacent lands are, it could be tennis courts, it could be a soccer field, it could be a driving range.
I could have, I could also have farm animals there?
No, open space isn't farmland, agriculture's-
You can have, you can have animals on open space, as far as I understand.
Well, you would have to comply with the city's animal control bylaw, but-
Okay, so, you're telling me that if this goes through, what's designated, what would be designated would be single family residential, and I would have the opportunity to develop that land?
Yes.
Counselor Thompson, did you want to weigh in too, you had a comment? Thank you, Ms. Ilovich.
No, I was just gonna say, if you've got three and a half acres out there, you have your home there, if there are services come by, you can come in and put an application in for whatever you want, if you want to develop it, if you want to do anything, you come in and bring an application before the council, and we deal with it, the same as we are here tonight.
So, now, the same thing that we were talking about, the other, the other development on Old Field Road, the timeline for this is ten to twenty years. Now, because I'm the only one sitting right in the middle of this, I'm gonna get all the traffic, all the noise, all the dust, all the dirt, and I'll be the only one being able to complain, who's gonna listen to one person? You're not gonna get twenty people calling you to tell you that, but I have to live there. So, ten to twenty years is a long time for this project to be going on.
Well, ten to twenty years, nobody knows how it's gonna advance, and if it does advance, we're not making a decision on that tonight.
Oh, I understand that, but I just want to know how it impacts me if it does go through for ten to twenty years. Who wants to, who wants to live in a construction zone for ten to twenty years?
Definitely the downside, right, there's the upside and the downside, that's definitely the downside.
Exactly, exactly, I'm just, I just wanna, I only want to clarify what, what it means for me, I'm not gonna lie, you know, the other stuff-
And the other side, if you've got services there-
The other stuff matters to me, I'm sorry, I already have services, thank you.
What, municipal services?
Yes, I do.
Okay, well, you got a valuable piece of property.
All right.
Do you have any other questions already? Now, again, no decisions are made, we just gathered information.
No, I understand that, I understand that, I just needed to know what, how it affects me.
And you could at any time come in and sit with our planners, and they can help you look at the options, if things go forward, I mean, at any time, you can come in and sit with them as well. Counselor Iannone?
So, basically, what you're saying is you do not want to live like the residents on Dorchester Road for the next ten to twenty years.
Because I don't have thirty voices to complain about.
Got it, and so you are now on the record, that's the point of today's meeting.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, yes, you can step up, if you can state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Ravinder Singh, and I own a property on 8675 Montrose Road. And I might be in the minority, but I think this development is a good, a good thing. I think that, unfortunately, like, I feel for all my citizens here, but the noise and the dirt and everything else, but this is the cost of progress, and I think somebody should speak for it to a positive thing. And I think in order for any city to grow, we have to deal with these things. And unfortunately, it sucks, but that's what we need to grow. And I just want to be the one voice to say, I'm for this.
Thank you very much, Ms. Singh. Yes, next, yep, step up to the mic, if you can state your name and your address, please.
Linda Manson, 4732 Cookman Crescent, Niagara Falls. There actually was one voice up here earlier who was trying to convey something of a positive nature, and that was Dr. Barker. I was, if staff, if the, I'm sorry, if council had read, has read his presentation, he opens it by saying that he was very enthusiastic about this project about a year and a half ago, and I think the reason why his voice was getting elevated has to do with the term bait and switch, it was a bit of a bait and switch. I was one of the, he mentions in there, there were about twenty people that showed up last, last winter, we think this is, you know, was, looked like a reasonable thing, it was, it was put off like in Neverland out there, someday, if the hospital's ever approved, someday, it's out there. So, we were like, you know, this, you know, and actually with counts, with the planning department, it was such a refreshing change from another development. And we thought, well, okay, so, the people are looking at things, and they're listening, and then, and there were two disturbing things, if I recall, John, two disturbing things, and one was sort of the absence of a little bit of a natural heritage thing, which John, through his due diligence, went out and discovered there was even more. The other thing was the term compensation. Last year it was offsetting, this year it's compensation. And we asked him, oh, well, you know, it's just, it's just, we just use the terms, you can't compensate for some of these things. And, 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 you know, while this may be a wonderful development, there are a couple things, and Councilor Morocco said, the two things she said was, is this not gonna be a, still a golf course? Council's being kept in the dark on this thing, like Dark Ages, unless you actually go out to these, to these open houses, and Lord knows, you've got a lot of work to do. And to grow to these things and see, no, that's, and to get there, you had to grow out into the dark, and it was a beautiful evening, and it was, it was so secluded and all the, and there were noises even in the middle of the wintertime, and there was silence, you know, that's all going to change. That's fine, the thing, I can't remember, I think it was year 2000 when this, when this was made into a golf course? What was that? The environmental impact studies in 2000, seventeen years ago, are very different. And when John Barker, when Dr. Barker mentioned, when his voice went up and mine started to grow up too, because of a certain thing, a peer review of another development, when God created this particular area, it was before the QEW, it was before the hydro canal, it was, there was one big giant landmass there, and when council keeps getting presented with piecemeal developments, tonight, before this, it was the Old Field Road, this section, before that, it was, that was section three, section two, section one, then you go to the other side of Drummond Road, now they're looking to the south side of, you know, you know, of Thundering Waters development. The peer review that came in on the environmental impact study of Thundering Waters Forest has everything to do with this development, everything, all of the recommendations, and they are mighty, they are mighty. All of the recommendations are forward directed. Council has to, when it comes time, make a decision of what you want your legacy to be, because there was a time when this was one big piece of land, then it became this, not your fault, people buy things, but down the road, yes, golf courses are going to be turned into developments, because golf is going out of fashion, because we're getting older. The ones with, and people with the money don't want to golf anymore, they're off doing something else, they're buying condos on boats, you know, but I'm just saying, these things, you can't, it can't just be a piecemeal thing here, a piecemeal thing there, that thing there, the animals who now, I was reading an article today, and they're talking about we are now into the sixth genocide of animals, the sixth one, this is the first one that's being created by people. And there's another side of this thing too, and I would like to point this out, Dr. Barker said, we're only talking eleven hectares, we're talking five percent of the entire development. I've seen this man stand here, and he's like a, he's like a, he's an asset to this community, he's a, he's a natural resource, I hope you read his report, when he's not saying he's against this, he's saying, with some modifications, you could set this up as the best scenario, given what happened. It should never have been approved as a golf course when it was, because of where it was, but it became one, can't take that back. You do have opportunities along the way to take other things, to prevent things from happening in the future, and when someone goes out there and, 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 and takes, does the due diligence of doing the research, and finds out that things were missing, and finds out that things weren't presented, and find, that's not his job, but it is, because he cares. And there are a lot of people in this town who care, and when you are presented with something, you need to have every fact, and you need to have it well ahead of time, this thing, 2015, and it's been in the works. And who knows how long before that, because rumor was out, and rumors are out now about other golf courses, okay? Be prepared, be forearmed, think about the legacy, don't think of this in one little thing, those poor beasties who are being endangered in that area there, they used to have the whole thing, then we put a highway through, we put a canal through, we put roads through, we got smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller. Now, I remember, I was one of the people that put in and said, oh, that center thing there, you know, like, make it contiguous here, okay, now they're gonna make it contiguous, but I'm finding out at the expense of something else. Please think bigger, ask questions, demand of the staff, and they've got a tough job too, because all of this growth, at what expense, at what legacy? This may be one of the better ones, and I think, in, like that gentleman said, one positive note, you had a positive voice here, but it's, it's, he gave, he tried to come up with the best possible alternatives, please don't let those things just fall on an editing floor, okay? So, it's, it's in your notes, it's there, good luck.
Thank you, Ms. Manson, yes, councilor?
Thank you. Ms. Manson, I have to agree with you, I think the Thundering Waters peer review has a ton to do with this development, and, and I think the fact that we're still dealing with both, we have to look at both hand in hand, but I want to ask a question in regards to, I had written down where Mr. Barker had said, that, that if we followed his recommendations, only five percent of the development would not be able to be included in this official amendment, am I understanding that correctly? Can I go through you to Mr. Barker? Did I understand that correctly, Mr. Barker?
Yes, it's, it's very small, the, they indicated eleven point four hectares, and the only other area would be to correct, extend a, to stop the fragmentation of the, of the PSW, to have a connecting corridor to the Welland River, half of which would be along an existing hedge, hedge road that's identified in, you know, background studies.
Okay, thank you. I don't think it's negative to want to have green space, I don't think it's negative to think in the long game, where I want my granddaughter to be able to go out there and see green space, or go out there and go through, go hike, I don't think it's bad to have green space for anybody. At this point, if we keep developing the way we are, we're not gonna have any green space in this city, period. And I know you have to balance money, nature, environment, but at this point in time, everything that's, every global warming, every environmental aspect, everything tells us to stop doing that. So, I thank you for your comments, again, those are gonna be included in this, and I will definitely keep in mind your twelve point, eleven point four hectares, and keeping the Thundering Waters peer review in mind.
Hey, do we have anyone else here, other than the applicant? Yes, would you like to step forward, state your name and your address?
My name is John Armstrong, I live at 4223 Lincoln Avenue in beautiful Beamsville, Ontario. And I'm here today, I'm not actually here today to talk about offsets, and I'm not here to talk about industrial buffers today, but I am here to talk about the Generations to Come piece, because I'm here today representing the province's masonry industry, and it's an association, a provincial association, that represents the province's brick, block, and stone industry. And our members are manufacturers, they're suppliers, and contractors, and people who dedicate their lives to building strong, resilient, sustainable, and beautiful communities, neighborhoods, and buildings. Across Ontario, the masonry sector employs more than fourteen thousand people, and contributes one point three billion dollars to the provincial economy. Part of what we do at Masonry Works is we work with municipalities to help them make the most of their planning policies, to build their communities to a higher standard. We visit municipalities that are undertaking official plan reviews, and large secondary plans, and we make the case for building to that higher standard. In the past three years, we've been to about fifty municipalities in Ontario, so we've actually been, we've been all over the place, it's a, it's a terrific project. We want to, we want to help communities like Niagara Falls build those beautiful, resilient neighborhoods and buildings, the kind of buildings that people will be living in, and they're gonna be talking about a hundred years from now, because that's, that's really what you're doing, right, you're making, you're making hundred year decisions right now, so, so we're here to ask you to pay attention to the built form. We're talking a lot about land use, we're here to talk about, we're here to talk about the building, and the buildings. We call our program Building Tomorrow's Heritage Neighborhoods Today, because, again, that's what you're doing, you're building tomorrow's heritage neighborhoods today, so we're asking you to pay, to pay attention to the built form when you go forward. We visit municipalities that are undertaking official plan reviews and large secondary plans, and we make the case for building to that higher standard. In the past three years, we've been to about 50 municipalities in Ontario, so we've actually been, we've been all over the place. It's a, it's a, it's a terrific project. We, we want to, we want to help communities like Niagara Falls build those beautiful, resilient neighborhoods and buildings, the kind of buildings that people will be living in, and they're going to be talking about 100 years from now. Because that's, that's really what you're doing, right? You're making, you're making 100-year decisions right now. So, so we're here to, to ask you to pay attention to the built form. We're talking a lot about land use, we're here to talk about, we're here to talk about the building, and the buildings. We call our program Building Tomorrow's Heritage Neighborhoods Today, because again, that's what you're doing. You're building tomorrow's heritage neighborhoods today. So we're asking you to pay, to pay attention to the built form when you go forward. It's my understanding that, that Appendix A of the plan will include the urban design guidelines with a, with an architectural component. The version that we were able to see on the city's website, however, didn't, didn't include that appendix. So we're assuming that you're, that you're still working on it and, and its completion hasn't quite yet been finalized. But that's, that's where, where our remarks sit today. Because regardless of having strong urban design guidelines in the plan, it's absolutely vital that, that, to not just complete the plan, but it's vital, it's vital to your complete community's idea that, that you have strong urban design guidelines. Particularly because you've got, you've got a riverfront neighborhood, you've got the new South Niagara Hospital being built nearby. It's a neighborhood that's going to have strong potential for a signature neighborhood in Niagara Falls for the future. And this is an area where a lot of people are going to naturally want to live and to work. It's an ideal example of a neighborhood that really should be considered to be a future heritage neighborhood with that high standard of built form. In fact, I actually encourage those high standards in all of the new developments because of, because of the, the importance of, of the generations to come. Municipalities are increasingly understanding how important it is to build those kinds of neighborhoods that residents want to live in. Through strong policy, design policy, you have the power to make that happen. Through the Planning Act, you can, you can, as, as a city, exercise very broad input into matters of exterior design, including character, scale, appearance, design features, sustainable design, and building materials. Many municipalities are using these tools, such as site plan control and architectural control guidelines, to have input into the built form, even in townhouses and in small residential. We understand that one of the principles of this plan, of your plan, is to promote placemaking. And that, and that the intent is for the secondary plan area to develop into a complete community with distinctive, livable neighborhoods. Part of what makes a neighborhood distinctive is the actual built form, as I said, of the homes and the buildings within it. It's more than just how the houses are positioned, it's what you see and what you, and, and what you drive by. People notice the building materials. And those, and, and they add an incredible quality to that neighborhood, especially when you look and imagine those neighborhoods 50, 70, 75, or 100 years into the future. The plan already has some policies set forth, set out for elements such as orienting the development to a road, for instance, and that's a good start. But it's vital to plan deliver fully on those still-to-come urban design guidelines.
Well, Mr. Armstrong, did you want to just maybe summarize, you know?
Sure, sure, I'll summarize. Yeah, absolutely, I'll summarize. Yeah, I'll summarize. Yes, thank you, thank you. Basically, the, basically the point is, you're creating a large, you're creating a large new community, large new area, you're, you're looking at the, the planning pieces. A component of that in your appendix is, is, is the, are the urban design guidelines, the architectural design, the architectural controls. We're basically saying, pay attention to the, pay attention to the built form. Densities are getting tighter, communities are getting, are getting smaller, that built form is getting more, getting more and more important.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Armstrong? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Is anyone else here other than, actually, is anyone else that wants to speak? Yes, Ms. Grandoni, if you want to come forward? Yes, councillor?
Can I just ask a question in regards to his presentation?
Yes.
Basically, he's a lobbyist for the bricklayers. Is that who we now have put on our agendas?
Anyone that wants to speak can speak.
Just want to make sure, because that, councillor Campbell had it hit the nail right on the head, that has nothing to do with what we're dealing about here. So we're, so we could now have lobbyists come and talk to us about our developments?
Anyone can speak, councillor.
All right.
Everybody's lobbying some position. Yeah, come forward, please, Ms. Grandoni.
I'm going to hold you to that, anyone can speak, because years, oh, I, I've been denied the right to speak in here sometimes, so.
I don't recall you ever being denied, Ms. Grandoni.
Ah, I'm sorry, but I sure am right here. But I hate to start off like that, but I'm sorry to resist. I have a signed copy here that I'd like to leave with the clerk, if you could please pass it. Thank you. And did the council all get this through email or through the clerk? Mr. Chairman, members of council. My first subheading is dominant ecosystem ignored. The dominant ecosystem here is the Welland River. Prior to any development approvals, either north or south of this major ecosystem, a Welland River watershed plan should be undertaken, completed, and adopted into the official plans of both the city and the region. This would be following your own regional policy plan and the provincial policy statement. Such a plan should legislate all forests, streams, floodlines, and well-water recharge areas to be protected, they are being essential to this river's ecosystem health. Further, public access either by roads or trails and wildlife access provided by wildlife corridors must be ensured. In this case, access roads should be added along the river to include the industrial lands between the Grand Niagara Lands and Montrose Road. To deviate from the watershed approach will result in a confused, piecemeal river plan, leaving all ecosystems short-changed and unbalanced and the public dissatisfied. And the Northwest area is a classic example. Opportunity for use of the river and its increasingly rare forests as a tourist attraction will be lost. My next subheading is failure to do hydro-geological study. Again, considering the proximity of the Grand Niagara development to this major Welland River ecosystem, it is inexcusable that the foremost hydro-geological study has not been done as part of the environmental impact study for, for the Grand Niagara development. This means the EIS is incomplete and should not be accepted. Hydro-geological studies were done as far back as 1976 for Shrinus Creek. So why not 40 years later, when so much evidence exists proving the need for such a study? Such evidence includes sewer infiltration, sinking sewers, basement flooding, sinking roads, sinking workers, lives near loss, sinking houses in some areas where I don't dare mention. These problems have become the taxpayer's burden while the developer profits. Remember, the Chippewa area proximate to the Welland River still has uncorrected sewer issues after 40 years. Such a major omission means that impacts on recharge areas nearby and possibly distant farm wells, provincially significant wetland forests, and stream-based flow including springs, and accompanying impact on fisheries remain unknown and therefore unprotected. Groundwater features are required to be protected by the provincial policy statement. Under storm water management, the next heading, I could not readily see, and I stand corrected if it's in there, in the environment documents, any proposed location for storm ponds. Past experience has found attempts to locate these in PSW forests in an undesirable place. Their location should be made, made known in time for public comment. The next title, reducing infrastructure costs and development charges. Presently, there is much controversy centered around obtaining development charges from developers. One accounting rule is this, is that if you cannot increase your income, for example, through development charges, then look at decreasing your costs. Managing subdivision rainwater runoff all over land without pipes would be one way of greatly reducing new infrastructure costs, reducing cost of sewer problems, and reducing sewer replacement costs. And that's not impossible to do, because I know for a fact it's been done in some areas in Ontario. Going green gets you out of the red. Regional reports have espoused such an approach. It would take a motion from council to initiate such a change. These Welland River developments would be a good place to start, once a Welland River watershed is, plan is in place. Protect existing forests. More of the forest bounded by QEW, Lions Creek Road, Montrose Road, and the Rexinger Road should be protected, and it's some distance from this gentleman's project. It's the furthest right at the bottom on, on that map there, in blue, I believe. This forest extended to Montrose Road and clear cutting has occurred for years. Dumping occurred in a pinup wetland area here that should be restored by removal of fill. This particular owner has done enough harm and should not be allowed to cut anymore. I remain opposed to any more forest removal in an area that has already lost more than 100 acres of forest to the existing golf course and proposed hospital. It's kind of sickening that they destroy a beautiful forest to put a hospital on it. I have some questions there. And I would remind council that it has the power to request a Welland River watershed plan. And I've left you a quote, "If you stand for nothing, you will fall for anything." Heard that in a service on Sunday. But there's been a lot of talk about leaving green space, not just green space, but something, it's, it's important also for bees, our, our pollinators. It's becoming a serious situation. I'll just leave you with that, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else that wants to address council? Yes? You state your name and your address.
It might be easier to write down Carl Dockstater at 5113 Wilmot Street, Niagara Falls. There's a couple, it's, it's been a long meeting, so I'm going to try and, I'm going to try and get to the point. When I look, when I look at this corridor and when I look at these maps, I've looked at them on Google Maps, and I've gone out there and I've driven around the area. I've definitely spent some time in this corridor that's attached to the Welland River, and it's attached to the Thundering Waters project that, that's been the subject of, I would say, much controversy in, in this council room. But to, to take it back to the Grand Niagara, whether you call it compensation, whether you call it biodiversity offsetting, what, what you can't call it is, is a good plan. You, you just can't recreate the natural features that are present. When you look at these maps, even, even in the, even in the colors that are used here, you can see that that's all, that's all high-quality forest that's lining the waterway. When you think of the points that Jean just made, and, and you talk about what she was looking at, the fact that, the fact that you could ignore the dominant ecosystem feature and not even consider what's happening with, with the Welland River, what are we going to do without water? I'm, I'm not opposed to development at all. I have a great deal of respect for, for the gentleman with the, with the great ringtone in the back about his, his advocating for, for the cost of progress, right? But we really do have to look at, what's the cost of this progress? Right now, it looks like there's going to be a hospital built, and that's going to be across the street from this development, that's going to be all built up. There's a proposal to, to take down around half of the Thundering Waters Forest area and build all of that up, and then interconnect everything. So we'll need more, more water runoff, we'll need more sewage treatment, we'll need more roads built, we'll have more trucks coming in, thundering around. I mean, maybe we'll give a new, a new meaning from, from Thundering Waters, maybe we can call it Thundering Roads, right? From, from all of the transportation infrastructure that, that will be needed in, in the area. The, though specifically, since the point of this is to register comments, I would like to inquire, in September 21st, the Hadonashone Development Institute, referencing their file number of 030200-017-005, they wrote a letter that was in regards to the Thundering Waters development, but in the last paragraph of the letter, they did ask for information on, on the Grand Niagara secondary plan. When they asked for information on the Grand Niagara secondary plan, it was in a letter that, that also very specifically referenced the Nanfan Treaty of 1701. It referenced the Mitchell Map of 1755. It referenced the August Treaty of Niagara, 1764. There were two treaty, treaties of Niagara in 1764. There was also a 1781 Treaty of Niagara that, that doesn't apply to this particular parcel of land. And they referenced the Treaty of Fort Stanwix of, of 1768. So before this is to proceed, I, I would definitely like to, to see that letter addressed. I'd like to understand how communication with the Métis Nation of Ontario, the Mississaugas of the New Credit First Nations, the Six Nations of the Grand River, and the Hadonashone Confederacy Chiefs Council was conducted. There also seems to be an inherent conflict in the way that the upper tier and lower tier municipality do their business, in that it's the upper tier of government that's tasked with consulting with First Nations groups, but generally, the idea is that the lower tier does the secondary planning and the legwork. So there appears to be no mechanism in the lower tier for a proper consultation process. So this is something that should actually be factored into, to all secondary planning that, that comes in, to ensure that treaty rights aren't, aren't being infringed upon. So until that's addressed, I, I definitely have, have great concerns about this. Though again, I'd like to clarify that, that I'm not blanket against the development. I also am concerned about changing this from a golf course to all of the different proposed employment lands and the 3,800 jobs, and I'd be curious to know if that's 3,800 jobs, or if that's something that can actually be measured in, in labor hours, right? Like, are these, are these permanent full-time jobs that are going to be created for people that are going to be able to contribute to the, to the community? Or is there going to be a quick, a quick boom, perhaps some outsourcing of labor brought in to, to build up all this stuff, and then, and then those jobs are all gone after a certain amount of time? They're, they'll be gone, the forest will be gone, all of the natural heritage features will be gone. So I did, I did summarize all the, all the concerns that I've been hearing, and I want to try and get to, to an end here. So there are about 10 points that, that were made that I thought were important. So the, the dominant ecosystems, hydrological networks being ignored, that, that is a concern of mine, that I would like to have addressed. The treaty agreements haven't been brought up, they aren't brought up. 27 years ago, unfortunately, the OCA crisis happened in Quebec as a result of just the presumption that, I guess, that the, the relations with the First People of this land is, is unimportant. The Anthropocene was brought up tonight, I think that's actually important, right? The, the cost of progress, and when we're talking about a great city for, for generations to come, I'm specifically concerned with the seven generations and, and how not having any sort of a longer-term environmental plan, how not having sustainable development, how, how not factoring in the environment. I, I want to know how that's going to affect the Anthropocene specifically, I'll be following up on that. Again, I just want to reiterate the compensation, biodiversity offsetting, whatever you want to call it, it's, it's a bad idea, and that that should not be included as part of this plan. I want to note that even SciTech is worried about this plan. I want to note that this development is all proposed very close to PSWs, and if you, if you go along the existing PSWs in Oldfield Road right now, you will find debris, you'll find garbage, you'll find things, and, and I'm not saying that, you know, I'm not faulting the workers, I understand they're busy and they, they have timelines and everything, but, but we could all go right now, and we could have a look at, at all of the garbage that's, that's on the side of the road, right? So this is the type of thing that happens when you build right next to PSWs. You compromise the integrity of the PSWs, and I, I want my grandkids, grandkids to have PSWs more than I want them to, to have some developments. The old growth not being on the map, that, that concerns me. I mean, I'm going to walk away from this meeting with that image of, of John Barker hugging a tree that isn't even in one of these protected areas. Like, that's, that's very, very concerning. So I'd, I'd ask to have that concern specifically addressed. I'd like to ask about how the plan for development seems to be accelerating at an exponential rate forever. Like, that, that's just something that, it's sort of a recurring thing. I understand that we need places to live, I understand that it's a good thing that the economy's growing, but like, what is Niagara Falls doing? Is Niagara Falls always going to grow and grow and grow and grow and grow and grow and grow forever? Because we're sort of on the same pace that we've been on for the last 100 years, and if we keep that pace for the next 100 years, then there's, there's not going to be anything left for anybody. There's not, there's not going to be water, there's not going to be land, there's not going to be any natural features. I would like to note that, that we need water more than we need new houses, and this, this is right up on the Welland Canal. This, this is an important, an important source of water. And that, I, I actually, I actually agree with, with Mr. Armstrong, that, that if it is going to be built, it should be built to, to the highest quality, right? That, that if there's going to be new buildings put up in, in this city that I love, the city that I've lived all over Ontario, and I've said this to this council before, but I've chose to live in Niagara Falls because I think it has great natural features, I think it has a great park system, I think, I think it has great people working hard to represent the city's best interests and my kids' best interests and their future interests. and my kids' best interests and their future kids' best interests. But if things are going to be built, I just want to see that those things are being built to the highest standard. So I'd really like to press Mr. Hurlovich to, if he's going to go ahead with this, go ahead in the best possible way and be mindful that this is built properly. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Dockstater. Any questions of council? Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? All right. The public meeting with respect to the proposed secondary plan. I'm sorry, yep, oh, yep, okay, sorry. Did you want to speak?
Sure, just a few couple of words.
Yeah, absolutely.
Been a long night and I'll make sure I keep it really short. Mayor and councillors, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I'm Frank Baldassera, I represent the ownership of Grand Niagara. And I can tell you, first of all, I'm sure glad that I don't own Thundering Waters. I mean, I can't believe the amount of conversations around Thundering Waters. Just a couple of simple points, I just want to kind of put things in perspective hopefully. This land was assembled well over 20 years ago. You know well that previous owners in the height of the golf industry decided to build quite an important golf course with a golf resort component to it. The city and its wisdom and the region supported it with significant funds. And we, and then 2009 happened, 2009 was a traumatic experience for people in the building industry and the development industry and for a lot of people. And we got involved in property in 2010. So we are not newcomers to this. 2010, we got involved. And with my partners, the Portland Holding Group and Western Group of Companies, we purchased the land in 2011. In 2000, right after we purchased it, we brought together and we had a competition with three prominent consulting firms to try to find out what are the best uses of the land. And I could tell you, we spared no expense to try to find a way to make it a golf resort component, wellness component. We did a lot of effort in trying to take that original vision and make it happen. But the economic times just didn't allow for that to happen. We then got excited when, of course, Jim and his enthusiasm about the hospital and the city tried to bring a hospital to the South Niagara area. We were helpful, I believe, in getting the Grassill family to help with that and did do the initial investment in that. We selected our consulting group in 2014. And as said, in 2015, we had a meeting with 24 attendees from the region, Conservation Authority, and from the city and our team to talk about how to come up with a secondary plan that met everyone's needs. We did a lot of listening. We heard a lot of reasons and what your priorities were and what the cities and the regions' priorities were. And we believe we've reflected that in our plans. We do have a major asset in this property and that is our environmental spaces. We are very sensitive to protecting the ESAs, protecting the corridors, making sure that the whole Welland River area is protected. And you can tell if you look into the fabric of our development that we have done a pretty good job. And obviously, there's always room for improvement to be able to really do what is required there. With respect to SciTech, I hadn't planned on speaking on it today. But in listening to the comments by councillors and by others, two words came out, consistency and safety, consistency and safety. And I can tell you that our position is very simple. We believe that SciTech should have a single arc which is consistent for every landowner, which is consistent for every person and knows what can and can't be done both inside that arc and outside that arc. And presently, we have a separate arc, again, previously negotiated in good faith, that is not consistent with the current arc. And I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to sit down and talk about the merits of it because I truly believe that it's in the city's best interest, in the region's best interest, obviously in our interest, and also in SciTech's best interest to have one single arc that everyone works from. We also have a working group that we worked with for almost two years and that working group has been intimately involved in setting up all the parameters for our studies and is in the process of reviewing all the studies. And hopefully, they'll come up with recommendations shortly for you. And I can tell you, having worked on several major developments throughout the Greater Toronto Area in particular, that there hasn't been a more cooperative, more open, more transparent process. We've had three public meetings. This is the fourth meeting that we have with the public's been involved. We have attempted to communicate and educate everyone and have everyone input their comments and their opinions into our plan. This has not been something that's hurried, it's not something that's been fast. And we've been able to take all that advice and reflect that in these plans. The plans, I think, are really well-founded. So just in closing, it has been a pleasure working with the city staff, Alex's group in particular, John Barnsley, Reno's group at the region, headed up by Brittany Williamson and Dave DeLeese and his team at Conservation Authority because they have had a lot of input into what we're doing, how we're doing it, make sure that everyone's interests are taken care of. And this, in my opinion, should be a model example of how the private sector and the public sector can actually work together to get something very significant done. We are excited about getting this development going as soon as possible. We're excited about bringing all these jobs and we're excited about having a mixed residential uses that really get all of the different constituency involved. We have heard very clearly that building another retirement community, a golf course community, is not in the best interest of the region. And we heard that very clearly from you. So thank you very much for your time. I know this has been a long night and really appreciate working with the city, the region, and everyone here to make this great project really a reality. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I'm sorry, we might have some questions. Yes, councillor Crater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A very good presentation. You've got a great golf course.
It is.
It's one of the best golf courses. I always say it's one of the best kept secrets. Mr. Bakker, he's positive about your development and he had indicated he had a couple suggestions. I'm just simply asking you, did you have a chance to look at those?
Again, I told you very clearly, and you can take a look at our plans. We are very sensitive. I believe that it's a major asset for our development. Well, again, I haven't seen what he's done. But I believe that we have a major asset in the environmentally protected ESAs. We have major assets with the Welland River. We have major assets and we want to protect those assets. And we have gone to extreme lengths of providing... If you look at our road patterns, we don't try to use road patterns that infringe. What we want is public access to all of the green areas. What we want is walking trails. We want people to be able to enjoy this incredible sight and make this community the premier community for Niagara Falls. There's no question in our mind that it is an asset. We're not trying to eliminate or cut down big trees. That's not what our plans are.
I'm sorry, I'll close with this. Can you take a look at it?
I will, absolutely.
See where the stocks are?
And again, I just want to remind them though, we are not Thundering Waters and we're not doing what they are doing. So whatever that is, I just don't know.
I had that feeling when you said, "I'm glad you don't own Thundering Waters." I'd be a little more too. Listen, thank you very much, thank you.
And by the way, it's my pleasure to finally meet all of you. I know I've met a few of you and I trust that we'll have many years of being able to work together in a very positive way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Baldassera. Okay, there are no more speakers. The public meeting with respect to the proposed secondary plan is now concluded. We've got two recommendations, one that we accept, all of the input we received tonight. And secondly, that staff continue with reviewing and bringing the secondary plan forward to council for a decision at a later date. I'm looking for that motion. Moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Ianoni. There's no further discussion, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you to everybody that came out tonight. Run to the consent agenda, what's the will of council? Motion to move the consent agenda, seconded by councillor Strange. We'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. I've got to run through my notes here quickly. Sorry, apologize in advance. We're live streaming, everybody. So just a reminder, it's been noted, we've had some people calling that they pick up on cell phones and they pick up on ambient noise. For the record, live streaming, we've had 4,500 views since we started live streaming. That's been more than 1,000 hours viewed. 60% is live, 40% seems to be... I'm sorry, 60% is on-demand versus 40% where there... Wait a minute, I got this confused here. Help me out, Mr. KJ. On-demand viewing is 61% versus... Oh yeah, okay. 60% they view after the fact and 40% live. Typical council meeting, we've got 600 to 700 viewers. And the part that I was quite surprised, how many countries are viewing our council meetings? And I'm told it's probably not an accident because they're not on it for two minutes. They're on it for a half hour, 45 minutes. I mean, Mexico, places all India. Yeah, there's a list of about 20 countries. So it's quite interesting. That'll be a good story for the paper to write on the live streaming. I don't know, I don't know. Two, yes. No, actually, it's pretty significant and it's good to see. Update on the issues, our website has been launched today. We've got improved navigation features and you can provide your feedback at letstalkniagarafalls.ca. The other thing to let council know, I know we've been talking about this for a long time, a paperless agenda. You know councillor Kerrio, you've been talking quite a bit about it? Yeah, so we're moving forward. The goal is to have it by the fall. So staff have already been moving forward on it. In 14 years, in 14 years. No, this year. I know it's hard to believe in a town that we have ripley's, but it's hard to believe, but apparently it's coming. Is that right, Mr. CAO? Mr. Clerk, is that right? Okay, well, you heard it right here. You have iPads? So on a sad note, obituaries. Joanna Daniels, retiree from our financial, finance department. Brian Milner, father of Jonathan Milner of Niagara Falls Historical Museum. Terry Leibrock, former Niagara Transit General Manager. Elizabeth Shaka Scoy, mother of Kent Shaka Scoy of our Municipal Works Department. So our condolences go out to these members and their families as well on their losses. I'd like to thank council members for representing the city, councillor Strange for representing the city at the grand opening of the new McDonald's on Highway 420 in Stanley. Councillor Campbell... What was that?
Did he get a Big Mac?
Oh, he did a Big, that's right, he did. Councillor Campbell for representing the city at the Ontario Power Generation Winter Festival Lights Sculpture Grand Reveal at the Heartland Forest. And councillor Morocco for representing the city at the Buddhist Temple, 20th anniversary and the grand opening of the Buddhist Chinese Art Museum. Pardon me? You were there too, at the Buddhist thing?
Yes.
Okay, well, good, thank you councillor Thompson. That's great. And councillor Valpatti was there as well. I don't typically mention, but since she's here, it's a good point, I should mention her. Councillor Valpatti. A couple announcements here, the KO Childhood Cancer Event. Congratulations to councillor Strange and his team for a very successful event. And I know we are joined by several councillors, including councillors Campbell, Peter Angelo, Thompson, Morocco, and of course, yourself, Strange. Did I miss anybody? Is everybody? Oh, and councillor, oh yeah, okay, councillor Kerrio, that's right, I forgot about that. Did you drive there in your Ferrari? No, okay. Also, dedication ceremony, Gene Somerville Firefighter Museum out in Station Four in Chippewa. I was joined by councillors Thompson, Crater, and Morocco. Are you good, everybody? Also councillor Thompson made reference to the Global Legacy Boxing Event, Fight for the Falls, founded by Lennox Lewis. And it was a fight for the falls featuring renowned boxer Phil Legreco, who hails from Niagara Falls. The event was attended by councillor Thompson, Campbell, Strange, and myself. Are you good, everybody, for that one? And lastly, Canada Day. Thank you to staff and volunteers for a great event, sea of red and white. We had three grand marshals, Rich Little, Derek Sanderson, and Marcel Dionne. And for anyone that stuck around, Rich Little did a little bit of stand-up from the stage. Actually, he was very funny. He said that he had a lot of ties to Niagara Falls, including, and also belts and shoes. And he went on and on, he had a lot of, he was good. So the parade was attended by councillors Morocco, Campbell, Peter Angelo, and Crater. And it was a big crowd, big crowds, a great day. And luckily, the weather held for us because it was threatening. And yes, that's right, our trustee, Helga Campbell for DSBN. And before that, we had citizenship ceremony at the library as well. The Canada 150 Millennium Recreation Trail, we opened up another section of it, very, very exciting. Congratulations to the city. And I know we are joined by councillor Campbell, you were there? Yes, anybody else? Okay. And lastly, Chippewa Lions Park will be having their opening Thursday, August 3rd at 4:00 PM. That'll be the next opening of our 10 new park revitalization taking place this year. So again, that's Thursday, August 3rd, Chippewa Lions Park opening. And there will be a special council meeting Thursday, July 20th at 4:00 PM. It should be a very brief one to deal with the downtown BIA. And our next official council meeting will be Tuesday, August 22nd. I do have a call for a motion. At the regional council meeting on June 29th, regional council approved the triple majority in next steps to bringing forward intermunicipal transit. Our council intern needs to appoint a member of council to serve along with myself on the IMT Steering Committee. And it's my feeling that since councillor Morocco is already the city's representative at the Transportation Advisory Committee of the region, that it'd be appropriate that she fill the spot on intermunicipal transit steering committee as well. Okay, moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Thompson. That councillor Morocco joined myself as the appointed Niagara Falls members of the intermunicipal transit steering committee. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you for that. Yes, Mr. Clerk?
There is an addition that's related to that matter that on your additions agenda, it was listed as number four in our communications about the regional report for intermunicipal transit. A second part to that recommendation should also be to refer to staff to select a municipal staff representative to that steering committee.
You say four of communications?
Sorry, of the addition.
Oh, additions, okay. Oh, I see, okay. Oh, right, okay. So would that suffice as the motion or...
Well, you've got the first half covered where we'll appoint Joyce Morocco as the council representative. But we're also looking for a municipal staff representative.
So then, do we need to make a motion for that?
I can include that in the motion.
Okay, friendly amendment, include that as Carl's our staff member, you're good with that? Okay, so we're good, thank you for that, Mr. Clerk. Councillor Thompson, you had a point of business?
I wanted to deal with the matter regarding the lot.
Yes, that's right. So did you want... Yes, so did you want to make that motion, councillor Thompson?
We have to approve councillor Morocco's event.
Yeah, we did, we voted already and we just had an amendment, we had an amendment.
It's worse... Huh? Yeah. Anyway, I would like to make a motion that we assure that they can build on the three acre lot regardless of the circumstances and that the staff work with, knowing that the council is in favor of assisting them in their efforts to utilize their properties.
And the official address of that is, just so we have that included in the motion? I've got a second already. Do you have the official address of...
8365 Bigger Road.
8365 Bigger Road. Okay, so we have a motion by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Strange, that council will be on record of supporting the development and that you work with staff to bring that forward. Okay, of course, there'll be official approvals and whatnot, but at least we're on record as being in favor. Okay, we'll call that vote, all those in favor? Okay, opposed? You're in favor? Okay, no problem, so we're all good, that was unanimous. So thanks for hanging around, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
You guys are doing a great job.
He wouldn't have said that if we didn't vote in favor, wouldn't we? Okay, got it. Okay, now we move on to the communications and comments of the clerk. Item one, livestock Niagara. They are requesting a waiver of fees related to road closure and exemption to the city's noise bylaw and a special occasion permit for July 22nd. Did we do that one already? Okay, motion, looking for a motion to... Yep, moved by councillor Morocco, seconded by councillor Kerrio. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. Niagara Falls History Museum requests relief of the noise bylaw for their Niagara Falls Night of Art, September 21st. Moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? It's approved, thank you. Number three, Niagara Art Showcase, they're holding a festival September 15th, 16th, and 17th at Fireman's Park. That's the one that we did already. And that one's already been done, thank you.
Can I move the five budgets?
Now, there's one, number seven's been pulled. Maine and Ferry is going to be deferred.
Don't forget to the July 20th meeting.
To the July 20th. To, to the July twentieth, okay. So, we'll be doing the downtown BIA and the Maine and Ferry BIA. Okay. So, um, councillor, uh, Peter Angelo, you're moving four, five, and six. So, that's Lundys Lane, Victoria Center? I'm sorry, and eight. So, so Lundys Lane, BIA, Victoria Center, BIA, Clifton Hill, BIA, and the Fallsview, BIA for all their twenty-seventeen budgets. Okay? Yeah, you made the motion, councillor Peter Angelo? So, you got a, who's got, you've got a conflict, councillor Kerrio? Okay, we'll do it and block it. Uh, councillor Campbell? Um, any questions to that? I'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you, with noted conflict. Niagara Tinting, uh, Jody Burdette requesting an extension of revitalization grant agreement for forty-four eighty Bridge Street. Hopefully, everybody read that in the motion. Moved by councillor Thompson, second by councillor Peter Angelo. We'll call that vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Niagara Region Draft Regional Development Charges Update, that's just for the, uh, just to be received? Yep, moved by councillor, um, Peter Angelo, second by councillor Crater. All those in favor? Okay, I know, I'm trying to get everybody here. Okay, that's approved. Any additional, uh, items for consideration, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, yes, there was a, a list of, uh, a few of them there for the additions to council, and we're just, uh, handed out today. Uh, number five, sorry, we should go back to number three. Uh, one and two have already been dealt with. Number three, the downtown BIA Board, uh, they did at their last meeting, uh, make a change to their Board of Management Executive, and they were just asking for approval of council to those changes.
No, no, this is just their, um, their management, this is not their, their budget, not their budget. So, I need a motion, you wanna make that motion, councillor? Moved by councillor Morocco, second by councillor Campbell, that we accept their, um, what, their management appointees of, uh, for their board, their executive appointees, sorry, thank you for that, not management. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved unanimously?
Uh, number five on that, uh, most recent additions to the communications was for Heater's Heroes Run. Uh, they're looking for approval of council, and there's a attached, uh, resolution as well.
Okay, we got a motion by councillor Crater, second by councillor Thompson. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. It was denied, that's right, that one's denied, that's, thank you.
Uh, number six, the item was just from the City of Thorold. They're just following up with the OLG Modernization Framework that was passed, uh, previously by this council, and it's just for council's information. Um, you might wanna make a motion, I guess, to that effect.
To receive, uh, did you want to receive and file the letter of support from the City of Thorold supporting our, uh, issue with OLG? Okay, a motion, I'm sorry, a motion by councillor Thompson, second by councillor-
That's right.
Strange, all those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you.
Uh, next, uh, request from Daniel Masai, the request that August seventh, two thousand and seventeen, we proclaim as Brother Sister Day. It's for the approval of council.
Okay, uh, moved by councillor Ca- Peter Angelo, second by councillor Campbell. All those in favor? Approved unanimously, thank you.
And lastly, the Society of St. Vincent de Paul, they're requesting financial assistance in the amount of four hundred dollars to offset expenses that are incurred annually for the purchase of bus tickets from Niagara Transit.
So, an in and out, okay. Moved by councillor Morocco, second by councillor Crater. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved unanimously, Mr. Clerk?
That's it.
Onto the bylaws. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments?
Uh, there was one amendment, uh, just a revision that's included in your package to update, uh, bylaw two thousand and seventeen eighty-five, uh, just changing a few more staff appointments to that bylaw.
Okay.
Motion introduced to bylaws, right?
Motion by councillor Peter Angelo, second by councillor Kerrio, that the bylaws be given a first reading. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved.
Bylaws two thousand and seventeen eighty-two to two thousand and seventeen eighty-eight, read a first time.
Motion by councillor Peter Angelo to give the bylaw a second and third reading, second by councillor Kerrio. All those in favor? And that's approved?
Bylaws two thousand and seventeen eighty-two through to two thousand and seventeen eighty-eight, read a second, third time, and passed.
New business? Yes, councillor Crater and Strange?
Uh, thank you, worship. Um, I have one item that I, I talked to you about over the weekend. Um, for the information of council, this item is to, uh, deal with the, uh, reconstruction and repair of the existing, uh, retaining wall in Shriners Creek. Um, there was submitted to council on two different occasions from Municipal Works, a request to, to fund the reconstruction, um, of the existing, uh, uh, wall along Shriners Creek, and both times it wasn't approved by council. So, I wanted to just give you an explanation before I made some motion. Um, I visited this lady's home, she lives on St. Michael Street. And behind her house and two other houses on either side, there's the Shriners Creek. Um, when homes were built, there was no creek. And so, the city, I think, uh, went in and created a creek, or they had to in order to allow for development. So, that was fine. But what's happened is, the creek is collapsing. And so, her backyard is collapsing. When I was visiting her, she had bought the house a few years ago, and actually spent about seventy thousand dollars, um, renovating it, and she says her retirement home, extremely happy to be in Niagara Falls. But her backyard is collapsing. And in fact, there's a beautiful tree, and if it continues on, even I thought, I'm no expert, but gee, I think that tree could fall over. So, I did a little bit of research, and what I learned, thanks, thanks to, uh, talking to, uh, Mr. Holman and to, uh, Nick Golia, is that that creek that was put in by the city is our asset. Like, we're responsible for it. So, what Municipal Works had asked simply for was that we repair it, put in, in the wall to make sure it doesn't sink and collapse anymore, and deal with it. Because it was turned down twice by council, and I, you know, I don't think we quite realized, all we saw was the line item, and I'm not saying that'd be critical, but we saw a line item for Shriners Creek, and we have so many things to deal with. And this was in the priority one category that got turned down. Um, so, I'm proposing that what we do is to approve the request that came from Municipal Works for the funding of this, which, by the way, is one hundred and sixty-five, one hundred and sixty-five, eighty-five thousand dollars. But we pre-approve it from the two thousand and eighteen budget, and we approve it now. And if we had done that before, we actually, we just did it tonight, and earlier in our package, we did it for, um, some development, reconstruction of some sewers on one of our streets. We did, we used the same formula that I'm proposing now.
Harvard?
Harvard, that's it, we did it in Harvard. So, uh, as I said, if you, if you talk to the lady, yeah, it looks, her backyard is slowly eroding and sinking into Shriners Creek. So, I'm gonna make that a motion that we support the request from Municipal Works to fund this, and that we do it in the manner that I suggested, pre-approved, ought to be. And the reason it needs to be done, approved tonight, is because of, because it's an environmentally sensitive creek, that there's only certain times under the ministry, I think, administrative environment or natural resources, that you can work on the creek. So, therefore, the staff need to know that this can be approved, and then they can determine if they're able to get going on it this year or not, but they know they have the approval in place. So, I make that a motion.
Okay, so, we have a motion by councillor Crater, second by councillor Morocco. Uh, councillor Campbell?
Yes, uh, would it be possible to get a comment from, uh, Mr. Holman, please?
Thank you, thank you, Wayne. Okay, Mr. Holman?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, thanks. Uh, councillor Crater, uh, I think hit all the high spots. Uh, this is a section of the, uh, city's retaining wall that's starting to fail. And it's not going to collapse, uh, right away, however, these things don't get better. Uh, so, it's going to make the project bigger and bigger if we don't get to this shortly. We've identified it as a priority one, but of course, you know, among a, a number of other priority one projects. Uh, and so, unfortunately, it's been set aside. But it will be something we do have to do, and the sooner the better.
Okay, any other comments or questions? So, let's call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that's approved.
Thank you.
Uh, councillor, um, Strange, and then Thompson.
Yes, your worship. Um, just after the last council meeting, I know a lot of, uh, uh, council members have received a few emails, um, regarding some comments at the last, uh, council meeting, in particular, um, one email from one of our, uh, popular, uh, priests in, uh, in Niagara Falls. Um, it was, and I didn't realize it until actually, he emailed me, and I, and I, he put the times in, and then I went through the national, the council meeting, and there was actually two times where two comments went, um, went on, uh, with Carolyn, uh, councillor Ainoni, um, basically saying, and I know it was a heated, uh, debate going on, and, and, uh, sometimes you don't think what you're saying sometimes, but she said something like, "To get off my cross." Um, one particular pastor and, and popular priest, um, saying, "Being a member of the local clergy and not getting involved in politics at any level or taking any sides," there was one comment made at the meeting that I found highly offensive, and I feel it must be addressed and dealt with accordingly. Being a pastor of a local Catholic church, I feel the need to bring the offensive co- comment to your attention at, uh, three hours forty-two minutes and, uh, nineteen seconds into the video. When councillor Carolyn Ainoni spoke, she made hand gestures and said publicly, "I'll get off my cross." How dare she compare herself to our Lord and our Savior, Jesus Christ, and the brutal death he underwent for our salvation? I'm unsure as to Ain- Ainoni's religious affiliation, but this was absolutely ignorant, blasphemous, repulsive, and most detestable to us whose salvation was won on Good Friday in the cross of Christ. He bled and died on that cross for us. I trust this will be addressed in a family fa- in a timely fashion. Had councillor Ainoni used a sacred symbol of another world religion in such a flamboyant and derogatory manner, I am sure there would be a public outcry. We've all around this horse, you have, have received a few emails regarding the same, um, comments, and there's actually, when I went through, there was another comment at three hours forty-eight minutes and forty-five seconds, in which she did the exact same thing. Um, so, what we're asking, and I believe we would all like to see, because I, she, she did offend some, obviously, uh, Christian denomination in our Niagara region, so I would like to make a motion that councillor Ainoni apologize uh, to our local clergy and the Christian community.
Councillor Ainoni, did you want to address this?
Yeah, we passed a code of conduct tonight to not to bully and harass, and you couldn't call me and ask me about that. Looks like we're not even following our code of conduct tonight. I will say through you to councillor Strange, I emailed that priest back. I haven't, well, you have the copy, because I sincerely apologize to him. And his response to me, which he asked me not to share publicly, was that he is very sorry that he copied all members of council. He was too angry at the time. He believes his God in mind forgives me, and he appreciated my apology. But he did ask me, because the review called, because somebody around this council chambers gave the review that email, he asked me not to raise this issue in public, and I'm not going to.
Well, that's fine, there's other emails as well, and you did not-
But I don't have those.
And you did not ask for, and you did not apologize.
But I did.
You, you have prayed for forgiveness, and I'm thankful our God is a forgiving God.
He is-
You prayed for forgiveness.
And he forgave me.
So, you did not apologize to the Christian community in-
The Christian community is not offended. I made it very clear to the priest.
Okay, well, I received emails, and other people have received emails.
Forward them to me, forward them to me that are outside of this base.
So, you, you are not going to apologize.
I apologized to him if I offended.
So, you're not gonna apologize to the city of Niagara Falls?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is bullying.
Councillor, I think what he asked you is, did you, you made the comments publicly, did you want to apologize publicly?
You have my, my email to the, the priest.
No, this is to-
Then send them to me. And if there are more than that priest, I will apologize.
So, what he-
Send it to me.
Councillor, can I finish my sentence?
Mr. Mayor, you passed a code of conduct tonight that you're already breaching. So, continue.
I'm gonna finish my sentence, councillor. You've been asked if you would apologize to the public, you made your comment here in this chamber to the public, and if you choose not to, that's your business. So, he's asking you.
Thank you. Councillor Strange is asking to make a motion. You need a motion for me to apologize. I sincerely did not mean to offend anybody. I made that perfectly clear, I'll make that perfectly clear now. My motion, my comments were made in the heat of anger, didn't, didn't mean to offend anybody, and that's not how I meant it.
Perfect, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and that priest-
Thank you so much. Can I get that on record that she did apologize?
Yes.
It's on tape.
It's on tape!
Perfect, I just want everyone to know.
Come on, Christ.
Councillor Thompson?
This is hilarious.
Sorry, I had a couple more, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that, Thompson. Um, the other one, um, uh, we're talking about the boxing event, which we, which was an awesome event, uh, that took place a couple weeks ago. And we had, uh, we, we just found out our, our grand, grand total, um, sixty-four thousand dollars that we raised, where half it goes to Ron McDonald's, and the other half goes to-
Oh, yeah, 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 great job.
And I want to thank all the council that came out, councillor, councillor Kerrio for buying the tables, so thank you very, very much. By two, so. Uh, but it was amazing, and we've already booked a date for next year, for, for June fifteenth. So, hopefully, um, uh, we can get a few, some stepping up the plate and, and rock the box. Um, last one is, uh, our Heater's Heroes Run for Children is on August twelfth. Um, we, and I just want to bring this up-
Saturday?
It's, it's on the Saturday, and we have, currently have eight children. I don't have all their names, but I know, uh, uh, most of them, and we, we give funds to kids who have terminal illnesses or life-altering illnesses or, or injuries. We have, uh, most of the kids have, have cancer, unfortunately. Um, there's one muscular dystrophy, we have one of our, uh, very own, Julianne Misk, who's gonna be taking part. She's going through a, a pretty tough time right now, she's going through a second surgery to, uh, fix, fix her jaw, her, her jaw. And, um, so, she's really going through a tough time, but she's trying to recover, and she's actually gonna be one of the, our final laps that is gonna be running around the lap. Uh, and, uh, for some of these kids, it's like running a marathon, so, um, I would love for everyone to come, uh, especially on our first lap, it's kind of our opening ceremonies, and most of councillors come and, uh, and you do the honor of introducing some of the kids, so I just wanted to give an update on that, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor, that's great. I've got, yes, on that, yeah?
Just for that point, I, I want to say that, that the fight was a great job, but I also saw Mrs. Peter Angelo, uh, fight. And I have to say, uh, if I was councillor Victor Peter Angelo, I'd be very afraid. So, anyway, I want to say, congratulations for your wife to step up and, uh, go in the ring and fight, because that was a pretty tough and daring thing to do, so, uh, congratulations for your wife going in. And next time, I hope to see you there.
Councillor Thompson? Councillor Ainoni?
Anyway, um, also talking about boxing, uh, we also had the, uh, professional boxing at the, uh, Convention Centre. Uh, our first shot, uh, and it was highly successful. Sell-out crowd, and, uh, they already have set November twenty-fifth for the next one. We're gonna have three or four a year, and, uh, this one's gonna be bigger, more professional fighters. Uh, so, uh, we have another event coming three or four times a year, which is, which is gonna be great. Anyway, I'm looking for some, uh, feedback from the council. Uh, the mayor, uh, the CAO, and myself sit on the illumination board, which is made up of equal groups from Niagara Falls, New York, and Niagara Falls, Ontario. And, uh, I was asked, uh, to, uh, sit on a special committee to look after, uh, the management of the new illumination that was, uh, put, uh, in this last year, a cost of four million dollars, two million on each side of the board. Um, I hope I'm not starting World War Three, but I know that the feeling of the Niagara Falls, New York people with respect to the falls and the illumination is to light the falls and do little more. We have, uh, a problem where we have to vote, uh, several times a month, uh, where they want to, uh, uh, recognize some particular major event and have the falls lit up in a different color or whatever. And most of the time, uh, it's difficult to get to people on the US side, because they want the falls left the way it is, light it up, and there's little flexibility there. Um, we have the fireworks, uh, that are going there, and, uh, if you saw New York City, uh, in the, uh, July fourth weekend, uh, I tell you, two and a half hours of unbelievable fireworks.
Two and a half hours?
Hours, it was unbelievable. Yes. Uh, it's just, and like Sydney, Australia, I don't know whether you've seen that, the fireworks there. But, uh, anyway, our six-minute fireworks is, uh, rather insignificant to, to those things. those things, and I think we have to do everything we can to put on a show every night, and that's my feeling, and that's my objective, and I know the feeling on the US side is totally opposite from that. I have people in the industry coming to me and saying, "We put in an extra $600,000 to have special technology in the illumination of the falls to do some amazing things, to almost compensate for the fireworks, music, all kinds of special treatment, to make it a special event, that people are gonna come there, see the illumination, and it's gonna be probably one of our smartest marketing efforts that we've done in years, to have the falls illuminated and utilize this technology to the utmost degree." Um, I, uh, that's my feeling, and I'm going to that meeting, uh, those meetings, and I know the feeling on the US side is gonna be totally different, and I want feedback from the council. Is this not our objective, to maximize the illumination and the technology to bring people here? Uh, you know, you really have to be on the Canadian side of the border, if you really wanna appreciate everything, and, uh, in the final analysis, if we have problems, is there, and this should be referred to, um, our solicitor to determine if we have the legal authority to do that, if there is resistance to what we wanna do to maximize this effort, could we just do the horseshoe falls alone, and just light the US falls the way it is? Not what I would like to see happen, but it's an alternative. So all I'm asking here tonight is, am I on the right track, or should we be falling in line with the thinking on the south of the border with respect to it? I think this is a great opportunity, we put the money into it, and I hopefully can get the council's support to go along with my way of thinking with respect to this matter.
So Counselor Thompson's asking, how do you feel, we spent $4 million upgrading the lights at the Illumination Tower on the falls, uh, we covered $2 million on the Canadian side, and we're saying we didn't, did we do it just to have LED lights that are brighter, or there's technologies that we can do so much more with lights? If you go to Ottawa now, they've got mosaica, you know, on the Parliament buildings, they've got this, they're doing it all over the world, so there's so much technology that we can have, you know, we can have rainbows come in, we can have the things fade, like, there's so many tou, but some people are real worried, oh, I don't know, don't mess with it, it's just light, and they could do light shows through the night, they can enhance, we have the technology right now. So Counselor Thompson wants to represent our desires, because we put in a lot of money, as did the industry, and he wants to know, what do you wanna see on the falls? Do you wanna see the way it is now, just static lighting, changing colors, or would you like to see the options and the features that they can do with the new lights? So that's what he's asking for, is some feedback. So feedback, Counselor Morocco?
No, I have no problem moving forward and supporting some new technology or new opportunities to enhance, it's not a pollutant, it's not gonna cause any environmental, I mean, the lights are on the falls anyway, and I think that, that's forward-thinking. I, I have no problem thinking that we do that, I see the lights that are actually on the Oaks, uh, that's, that's amazing, you go by there sometimes, and you almost get an accident, so I have to watch care, because it's, it's so impressive that it does draw, and they're doing it like Ottawa and everywhere else, so yeah, I have no problem, if that's you looking for a motion, I would support, you wanna make a motion? I wanna make a motion. Make a motion that we support, Counselor Thompson, moving forward, doing some more creative ideas?
Yeah, so something that we'll let, we're open to exploring, and.
Yeah, yeah, open to explore.
Yeah, maximizing the, what, the lighting potential on the falls?
Yeah.
With the new technology.
Will it come back to us with a report for, if there's any additional costs?
Uh, yeah, I don't think there, I think the, the infrastructure's in now, it's mostly some software upgrades. Yeah, it's not, it's, it's there, and we already pay so much per year for the illumination as it is anyway, so we've got, I've got Counselor Campbell, and then Carrio.
Yes, thank you, worship. You know, I, I would second that, along with what Counselor Ainoni was saying, maybe we can have a report back after the summer, uh, they may feel differently and want to be part of the process, if that could be part of the motion.
I'll keep you informed.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then what they'll do.
I was on the illumination board, it's, it's different over there.
Well, the other thing too is, we'll have a night where you can go view it, you gotta go after midnight, right, when they're done the regular light show, and then you, you can view the technologies. We saw one, they had the maid of the mist projected onto the mist, coming out of the mist, it was spectacular. They've got things they can do, virtual fireworks, you know, with sound and light, it's, the, the technology, lighting has come a million miles. Yeah, virtual fireworks, yeah. This is some of the, that's where it's going, but we need cooperation, because it's 50% Canadian, 50%, it's cooperation, right?
If we don't do it, someone else will.
What we're saying is, let's at least look at it, see what we're, what we have to choose from, right? Counselor Carrio?
Thank you, worship. I think some of the partners that participated in the funding were told that this was what was gonna happen, so maybe we could ask them for their comments, because I think that they assumed that that was gonna happen.
Yeah, exactly, the industry played, paid a large part of the funding.
Yes.
And looking, and yeah, they're 300% brighter, and they look great and dynamic, but there's so much more, and we thought the idea, like in Ottawa, at 9:30 at night, they do a show on Parliament, and they get thousands of people show up every night for a free show, and that's the idea behind the fireworks, because if people come for the 10 o'clock fireworks, good chance they're staying overnight, so they'll stick around for the fireworks, right? And that's one of the big things that people stick around for, otherwise, you eat dinner and you leave. Here, they're like, eh, stick around for, ah, let's just stay the extra night, right? So we've got a motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Morocco, that we, we're supportive, and that we ask, we wanna see all the options that are available to explore.
I want more motions, and then council can tell me, somebody else move?
Yeah, okay, let's get another one. Okay, moved by Counselor Ainoni, seconded by Counselor Morocco, uh, that we do what we just talked about. Did you have all that motion, Bill? You have the words method of it? Okay?
If there's any additional costs of the backlash?
Yeah, if there's additional costs, in addition to the budget of the Illumination Tower, that, that they can handle there, which I think they can. Okay, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? That's unanimous? Unanimous resolution? Counselor Thompson, do you have any more? Okay, Counselor Ainoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the CAO, can you just give us an update of the status of whether we've hired a consultant to review the new fire station on Lundys Lane?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the RFP is completed, the RFP went out this week, today, uh, so the RFP is out, and we have a staff committee that'll be reviewing those RFPs when they are returned to us, which should be in a couple weeks' time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other in business? Adjournment? Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Morocco, all those in favor? I want to adjourn, thank you. See you on the 20th, special meeting.